Ashley, catch your side.
Ashley, catch your side.
Hello, Council. Hello, Council. Hello, Godly neighbors. Hello to the good and the unafraid. I am here today to speak on behalf of our Godly Police Department. Evil is powerless if the good are unafraid. I'm sorry. Can you guys please stop whatever you're doing and please listen to me?
That's mine.
I'll give you a copy. We are good and we are unafraid to fight for what is right. We are good and we are unafraid to speak up and have a voice. We are good and unafraid because of the fine police officers who serve our community. Today, we are good and we are unafraid. We want to sit around and talk about qualified people? Well, you're looking at them. Chief Cantrell, 10 years with the Godly Police Department, two associate's degrees, one bachelor's in arts of science and criminal justice, Officer of the Year 2016. The list goes on. Certified code enforcement, master peace officer, sexual assault, family violence, death, property criminal investigator, plans to get his masters in the criminal justice at Tarleton State. Taser, T. Cole instructor as well. Sergeant Arbuthnot, 12 years in law enforcement, six with the Godly Police, six in county correctionals, five as a firefighter, has MAT Tech, Rookie of the Year 2018. Officer of the Year 2019. Only person to catch the infamous ATM thief that eluded the FBI and three jurisdictions in Oklahoma, Texas, and Florida. Leads in arrests, traffic stops, citations, and warnings. Again, certifications, training as a detective, sexual assault, violence, sexual offender investigator, internal affairs, intermediate peace officer, the list goes on. The theme of the week has been qualified versus unqualified and competitive pay. Before paying side deals and hiring our buddies to look at the... We need to stop and look at the pay of the department. Our police department have families, friends, loved ones, and children who they kiss goodbye every shift, not knowing if they are safe or if they will ever return. All for $40,000 a year? Forty? Really? And you think you have love for the city? Think again. So before moving forward with party committees and vending machines, these issues need to be at the forefront of the agenda items. Council should not have a say on police confirmation. The law is from the 70s and very few cities continue to adopt this process. We have already seen the catastrophic effects of council acting as HR and in making unfair and biased decisions in a hiring process. The confirmation needs to be left to the hands of those in charge of the actual department, the ones wearing the badge, the ones who are hired based on their own livelihoods at stake, not you. All of this being said, I surely hope this council sees the necessity in confirming his, uh, sorry, his continued employment as an officer. He is an asset that Godly cannot afford to lose.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Ashley Ketcher side. Ashley Ketcher side.
Hello, council. Hello, council. Hello, Godly neighbors. Hello to the good and the unafraid. I am here today to speak on behalf of our Godly Police Department. Evil is powerless if the good are unafraid. I'm sorry, can you guys please stop whatever you're doing and please listen to me?
That's mine.
I'll give you a copy. We are good and we are unafraid to fight for what is right. We are good and we are unafraid to speak up and have a voice. We are good and unafraid because of the fine police officers who serve our community. Today, we are good and we are unafraid. We want to sit around and talk about qualified people? Well, you're looking at them. Chief Cantrell, ten years with the Godly Police Department, two associate's degrees, one bachelor's in arts of science and criminal justice, Officer of the Year, two thousand sixteen. The list goes on. Certified code enforcement, master peace officer, sexual assault, family violence, death, property criminal investigator, plans to get his masters in the criminal justice at Tarleton State, TASER T col instructor as well. Sergeant Arbuthnot, twelve years in law enforcement, six with the Godly Police, six in county correctionals, five as a firefighter, has mat tech, Rookie of the Year, two thousand eighteen, Officer of the Year, two thousand nineteen, only person to catch the infamous ATM thief that eluded the FBI and three jurisdictions in Oklahoma, Texas, and Florida. Leads in arrests, traffic stops, citations, and warnings. Again, certifications, training as a detective, sexual assault, violence, sexual offender, investigator, internal affairs, intermediate peace officer, the list goes on. The theme of the week has been qualified versus unqualified and competitive pay before paying side deals and hiring our buddies to look at the, we need to stop and look at the pay of the department. Our police department have families, friends, loved ones, and children who they kiss goodbye every shift, not knowing if they are safe or if they will ever return. All for forty thousand a year? Forty? Really? And you think you have love for the city? Think again. So before moving forward with party committees and vending machines, these issues need to be at the forefront of the agenda items. Council should not have a say on police confirmation. The law is from the seventies, and very few cities continue to adopt this process. We have already seen the catastrophic effects of council acting as HR and in making unfair and biased decisions in a hiring process. The confirmation needs to be left to the hands of those in charge of the actual department, the ones wearing the badge, the ones who are hired based on their own livelihoods at stake, not you. Scott Yarborough talks about Godly being the laughing stock all the way up to New York. Don't confirm these officers and find out. Without confirmation of our police officer members, irreparable events could follow suit, causing Johnson County to take over calls and emergency responses that could take up to forty-five minutes. Lawlessness. Will we be safe? I don't know. We will not falter. We will not waver. We will stand strong with our Godly Police Department. If they walk, we walk. We stand strong with our force. As one, we, the people, are good and unafraid. We are one Godly. A house divided against itself cannot stand, Abraham Lincoln. So today, I stand before you, good and unafraid, asking for peace, asking for unity, demanding the confirmation of these officers. And I would like to thank Chief Cantrell, Sergeant Arbuthnot, Officer Morgan, Officer Rizzo, Officer Templar, Officer Lot, Officer Giles, and newly hired Officer Mongin. We are one Godly. Today, we are unafraid.
Thank you, Ashley.
Rogan Sopelli? Roger Sorrell.
Good evening, council. Good evening, citizens and friends of Godly. That is a tough act to follow. I can tell you right now. A little bit about me, I'm a retired sergeant from the Godly Police Department. I started here in nineteen ninety-eight. Worked under four different chiefs. Worked here, I worked on the border as an investigator and a few other things. Worked with DEA, twenty years with Fort Worth PD, worked every division up there. But the best job I ever had was here with the Godly Police Department. All four times, they kept hiring me back. I'd be back now if diabetes hadn't knocked me in the dirt. Everything she says is true. You have no idea how many calls I made out in the county, because county never had anybody available. They had an east side, they had a west side. The west side always stayed on the east side answering calls on thirty-five. So I'm in total agreement with her. If you think the county's going to put a deputy in this town twenty-four-seven, they're not going to do it. I can tell you right now. The best interest and the best thoughts. The reason I'm here is, I know Jeremy Arbuthnot, Sergeant Arbuthnot. I was one of the ones who did his background, got him hired. He's been an excellent officer. I know almost everybody in town, every business. And Godly talking, they've put out a lot of good stuff on that thing. And you got to keep him. The other three, I don't know. Chief Cantrell. I was here when they hired him. I have worked with him, I've worked beside him, I've watched him work. I have great deal of respect for him for three reasons. One, the respect he has for everybody. Two, to be a good supervisor, to be a good leader, you have to listen till you hear both sides and not jump to conclusions. That's the most important thing, and he has those qualities. Very few people, I'd go back to work with him in a heartbeat, because I know if I had a problem, I could go to him. We'd talk about it. It would get resolved. I know he will do that for his troops. I know he has a love for this city. I know, and I have watched him sit down with people and talk with them, get their problems worked out, because he cares, deep in his heart, he really cares about people. Out-of-towners, same thing. He gives everybody the equal amount of consideration, and he earns their trust. I could go on for a long time, but like I said, after her deal, she's right on the money. You know, it knocked half of my deal completely out. But like I said, I'm proud of the members of this department. And they have done a good job living up to the legacy of the Godly Police Department. There's been a lot of good and bad going on around here, but one thing about them, they're all leaders within themselves, and they've got a good leader to lead them. And the best thing that y'all could do would be to make sure y'all kept them, because I've known a lot of other towns that have gotten rid of their departments and gone to the sheriff's office. Within a year, they're hiring the department back. It never fails, because say the county gets some big, major deal down on Thirty-Five South. Well, everybody's going down that way, even the one assigned to the city of Godly. They have no choice. County comes first, then the city, even though you have a contract. You know, county's got good people, but you got to go where the citizens demand you to go. And department's a whole lot bigger than when I was here last. I'm glad to see that, too, especially with what's going on today. Anyway, I appreciate it, and I appreciate y'all having faith in these men and women here.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrelli.
Dwayne Ferguson.
Mayor Proten, city council members, fellow Wildcats, and citizens of Godly, thank y'all for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of Officer Morgan. But quickly to tell you who I am, I moved to Godly in ninety-eight. The population sign read six hundred and fourteen, or maybe six hundred and forty-one. I'm not sure if that's dislect here or bad memory, but either way, my point is, it's a small town, and it's still a small town, albeit we're growing. We continue to attract people here because of our small-town values. Having officers who really, truly care about doing what's on the badge, protecting and servicing the citizens of this town is something that does mean a lot to me. I first met Officer Morgan when I lived in Godly Heights about four years ago, and I'm embarrassed to say I was both dismissive and rude. He wasn't. He stayed professional. So much so that I was compelled to apologize for my actions and the way I conduct myself. And I completely expected him to tell me to take a hike, because I wasn't very nice. And so I flagged him down the next time I saw him making his rounds, and I apologized. And he was very receptive, he didn't hold any grudges, and he continued to do his job with professionalism. Had several encounters with him since then, and to simply put, and to make this the shortest speech of the night, if I were to put my name on somebody's, if I were able to pick an officer to protect my family and the people I love in this town, it would be somebody just like that.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Clayton Smith.
My name is Clayton Smith. I've served up here on the council for a good many years. So I've sat where you're at, and I've tried to drink out of fire hydrant like y'all are doing. So I appreciate it. I appreciate y'all taking this on. It doesn't pay very well. But I wanted to come tonight, and I'm a little confused with the agenda as far as you throwing your hat in the ring for city administrator. I'll start there. I'm not for that, and I'll tell you why. Is that I feel like if somebody's going to do that, they have to represent the whole, the whole town, the whole, every entity of the, of the city. And I don't, I feel like, to me, you've shown your colors, and I'm not here just to bash you. I'm answering your request for feedback about whether I'm in favor of it or not, and I'm not. But as far as representing the city totally with every fire department and the public works and the police, and our little street dance episode is where I feel like you showed your colors with the police department. And so I'm just making it formal that that's my vote. Y'all will do what you're going to do. And in saying that, I feel like that maybe some of this confirmation, I don't understand the confirmation part either. Weren't they sworn in when they came in? I mean, as police officers? I don't know why they're having to be reconfirmed. Maybe y'all can clear that up for me. But I hope that some of this personal stuff doesn't drift over into that tonight, and we keep the police department that we have. I think they're doing a great job. I know the city can't pay what other cities can, and I know so it's a sacrifice for them as well to be here. So I think all that taken into consideration, they're doing a good job, and I thank y'all. So maybe you can explain the, I didn't get the town hall thing, and it looked like y'all were going to vote on his position tonight with that, so I wasn't going to say anything until I saw that, and I can't make sense of it. Maybe you can explain that. Can y'all talk back to me or interested in doing that?
Oh, I'm interested, yes, but I don't think we can.
During public comment, it's your time to speak to the council. We can answer with factual answers as for if there is a ordinance that applies or a state law, something like that. So just to clear the air, deconfirmations, we're not trying to get rid of the police department. We're not trying to disband the police department. So in the past, it wasn't done correctly. They were not sworn in, they did not have anything in their files, they were never commissioned, they were never bonded. So it was not done by ordinance, even though it was written in the eighties, that's our ordinances, it's how it's supposed to be done. So that's what we're trying to fix here today.
And I was here when we put the police department in place, so maybe, maybe I'll stand up and take my accountability, but as far as the confirmation for that, but I don't know how to ask the question as far as making sense out of the two line items in the agenda tonight for a vote on a town hall, and then y'all will decide then on the twelfth? And that's a question, I mean, yes or no?
So that is a discussion and action item. If that's what the council decides to do, then we'll have a town hall on the twelfth.
But if they turn that down, then, then y'all will vote tonight on placement of a city administrator?
That's also a discussion action item.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Clayton.
Stephanie Head, maybe? I can't really read the last name, so. Hodges, is it you? No? Okay, Amanda Bronner.
Good evening, city council. I'm Amanda Bronner. I'm here to speak like others on behalf of Officer Scott Morgan for the confirmation. We also moved to Godly about four years ago, at the time in Godly Heights, which was when we met Officer Morgan. I will say that coming from a town such as Burleson and getting to experience a police department that actually cares for not only its citizens, but as a parent, somebody who builds relationships with their childrens or with their children, we can't be blessed enough to have more officers in this town such as Officer Morgan. Not as eloquently spoken as some of the others above, but I just want to make sure that we are here to show our support and understand that, you know, the police department as a whole is something that Godly is blessed to have. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bronner.
Mason, would you like to wait until your presentation to speak, or do you want to speak now? I mean, you have a presentation right after public comment, but you can, okay. Chris Carter.
Thank you, council. All of you know me. I'm already an attorney, licensed in California, licensed in Texas. I do more than just family law. For you that don't know me, I have presented previously to this council before you got elected disclosures on liability of your position. I appreciate all your positions, taking it, because nobody else wanted it. It's a thankless position. It's not paid. But the only person that I know here today that does full disclosure, transparency, is Ms. Rodriguez. I am here because of a post that I've read and streamed by a ton of citizens of Godly as to Michael Pattenfuss, your application for administrator of this city. Unfortunately, you're not qualified for many reasons, legally and educationally. And I like you, I've spoken to you, I have nothing personal. But what everybody seems to forget, and you ran on, and you ran on, is qualifications. My understanding is there's been over a hundred applications for the city administrator. What makes Michael qualified? Union rep for a fire department? Ah, sorry, that's not anything of his business, doesn't know how to run a checkbook for a city, look for the planning, all the things that go on. I understand that he's been doing it part-time or interim for the last couple of months, because this city was screwed by the prior agencies, prior council. You guys have got left birdshed, okay? Understandably. But now the burden is on you to fix it, and the citizens are demanding. You, unfortunately, Michael, you don't have a job anymore, and so you're trying to fill in a position that you're not qualified for. I am aware of more people that are qualified. Ms. Miz who's in here has degrees in business administration, knows this stuff. She is more qualified than you are, and yet my understanding is that you believe you're the most qualified, and you're not. And you are also, my understanding, are the holder of all the resumes and applications that have came in. I'm not sure if the other council have received it, whether or not they've even voted on it, looked at it, considered it, had open interviews for any of the top five applicants. That is a concern. The other reason why you're not qualified is the settlement with Godly, which I have copies of, and it's fully done, with Mr. Amatoya, council. I read the demand letter. I know what it reads. I have the settlement, I've outlined it. You're named in the original, you have a monetary interest in it because the city signed a settlement agreement because you provided a copy, a bag of dicks. Understand, had it been litigated, it would have been thrown out easily, okay? Based on Amatoya's reputation, which I have already researched, from Alvarado to all the others. I won't get into the police department, because I've already researched most of them, and I've got information. You want to do this, then you're going to have problems when Jan Thompson's lawsuit, which has already been filed, comes down. I will tell you that you have liability. As you sit there, I'm not making a threat, but the citizens are paying for your fifty thousand dollars that you paid out because of it, and it's black and white. I will tell the citizens here that in a settlement agreement in Texas, there's no liability ever admitted. Mr. Amatoya can go find work elsewhere, because we don't want to do anything with his T col. Why pay him the fifty thousand dollars if he did nothing wrong? You cannot sit here and be administrator, knowing that you cost this city council and the citizens fifty thousand dollars from a budget. Was it provided to the insurance company? Of course not. The insurance rates would go- The insurance rates would go up, you wouldn't be able to hold office, they wouldn't defend. There are issues. Yes, I am an attorney. I understand all this, and I explained this all to you once before, that you have liability issues. Back there, especially in going, told you, "Don't settle." Did you listen? Don't blame the father Eugene as to anything that was signed. This was signed in July of this year by Mr. Carl Nielsen, okay? Had to be consented by you. It didn't matter what AC signed or negotiated. You have the power. If you don't know your own statutes for this city, then get off the board. Because I've already told you once, not twice, what the ordinances read. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Hard to believe, three, four years ago, post office called in suspicious person report on me for hunting Pokemon in the park around with my, at the time, nine-year-old daughter. Had the police department, they got down to my perjury suite. So, it didn't happen. And I know most of these officers, and I know Chief, I'm not gonna sit up here and say this and that. I understand the red tape, I really do. I understand why this confirmation happened. I also want to point out that I have been watching every officer's face in here tonight. They're not mad, they're not angry, they are thoughtful. When people are giving them credit, they're not basking in adoration or being like, "Oh, my God, this person likes me." They are just standing there as police officership. All right, and all the people that come in, they came here for a reason, same as tonight. It's beautiful. Because I want to live in that little piece of beautiful place. I only showed it today to show my support for the officers, especially Chief Cantrell, because I see more and more of them. I think that we should support them, and I understand that you're not. Confirmation is something that has to happen. It would be a shame if it didn't. It'd be a shame if you get officers that aren't anywhere near as quality as y'all could be having. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, John.
Hi, I'm, I have been in Godly, my family's lived here for over twenty years. Nineteen of my twenty children have gone to Godly schools, and I'm part of the Scott Morgan Fan Club. I've owned a business here in Godly. He has been there just for our family. We are a foster and adoptive family, and we've had a lot of problem children come in and out of our house, and he has always been the one to step up and talk to these children and help us through hard times and tell us whenever they were not making good choices in town, and he has just been a good support for our family, and I just think he is a good addition here. I've also worked with, I work as the statewide intake for the Johnson County Children's Advocacy Center, so I've worked with Cantrell down there. He always shows up for any of the forensic interviews that we hold on child abuse, and most of the smaller police departments don't do that, they're not able to send people. But Godly, I'm always proud of that they always send an officer down to be there for the interviews. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rooks.
Is there Reyes in the house?
Good evening. I am a new citizen here in Godly. I've been here about a year and a half. Mine's short and sweet. I moved here from Southlake. I work in Alvarado. So, obviously, you know why I moved from Southlake to Godly. It's a little bit of shorter distance for me to go from one to work from there to from there. Disaster up there. In Southlake, we had a great police force. But since I've lived here a year and a half, I have seen all these officers in different areas going above and beyond what I've seen in Keller and in Southlake. Okay, so, I strongly suggest, and I strongly advise, keeping officers that are part of the community in your community. If you get officers like in Southlake that live in Addison or they live in Hewlis, they're not part of the community. I think it's very important that you keep some stability with Officer Cantrell, I work with your wife and your mother-in-law, or your mom, out in Alvarado, and I think it's very important to keep those officers within the community. If you don't, you will be, you'll have officers like in Southlake and in Keller. And I'm not saying they're not good officers, I'm just saying they're not, they're not going to be part of the community. They're going to blow things off. And I have seen, I saw you last week in the burning heat out there in that Del Norte thing that was going on, and she was in uniform, burning up, but talking to citizens. You were talking to people, people you knew, obviously you knew, and people that came up and talked to you, and you took the time to talk to them in that burning heat. And I've seen all the officers doing stuff like that. So, I just wanted to say, I want to put my endorsement for Cantrell, and I think we should, these officers probably need to stay here. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
See him in the bathroom?
First of all, thank you all for having me. I wanted to dress up and look really nice, but I work today, so I didn't have a chance to, you know, change, so excuse the way I look, sorry for my appearance. I'm gonna give you a little bit about myself. My name is Officer Alex Rizzo. I've worked for the City of Godly Police Department for a little under a year. Before that, I was in Florida. I relocated over here to Texas because my husband got a job with Lockheed, so came over here, and settled down in Godly, the area, because we liked it. I was in Florida as a medical legal death investigator. I did that for about seven years, that's investigating autopsies, doing the crime scene with it, just talking to people in the most unfortunate situations. Moving forward from that, because obviously they're no longer here, I wanted to make a difference, so I got involved in crime scene investigation. When I was doing the crime scene investigation, I did that for about two years, that's kind of what you see on TV, but a little bit more intricate. You do the blood spatter, you investigate the scenes, you do DNA, processing evidence, testifying court numerous and numerous times where obviously it's gonna be one of those intense cases where you can provide facts, documentation. From that, I still wasn't making a difference, so I wanted to do a little bit more. So, I got involved in law enforcement, I wanted to make a positive difference. I know we're not perceived really positive in the news and stuff like that, but I wanted to make a difference. I wanted someone to reach out to us and be able to see that we're human, just like everyone else, you know? This department is amazing, and it's not because, obviously, we don't do it for the pay, because let's be honest, you know? You have a high risk, low reward with the amount of money that we get for what we do, never knowing if we're gonna come home or not, the things that we see that you can't unsee, the trauma that we deal with, dealing with people that most of the time don't have positive experiences with us. But it's a fantastic department if you got to know us. That's why we're trying to have outings, we're trying to get involved with communities, you can come out and talk to us, you know? We're pretty friendly. I don't know that most of that come in contact with you if I hopefully didn't have my lights on behind you, but if you just stop out and talk to us, we're humans. But getting to the, really quickly, the discussion, I want to address the pay, the retirement, community opinion, and the future. Compared to other Texas agencies, we are one-to-one on our retirement, which is really disappointing. I know we had a person back in December who's not here today say that it's okay, it's not okay, six percent's a joke. No one wants to be an officer working with what we do for an average of an extra seventeen years on top of it. I don't think you want a sixty-five-year-old officer in a foot pursuit, and I'm not saying that they couldn't handle it, but it's a long time. On top of that, we don't get paid well, you know? I know we can't allocate certain things, but when we put this new budget in, we are going to be the lowest-paying department for what we do. We would like a two-to-one retirement, which is seven percent, and they match us. It really helps out and makes a difference. And I'm fortunate enough to work for other departments where I can see, in the state of Texas, it makes a difference. We are, I am overqualified. You know, with my degrees, I'm gonna be an advanced peace officer next month. With my four years of previous law enforcement that I didn't mention from Florida coming over here, me being seven years death investigator, as well as my treason crime scene, you're not gonna find someone that's gonna have this experience, that's gonna stay in this department for what they get paid or what they're qualified to do. You know, you want people that are gonna be able to treat your loved ones and to investigate a scene and to do thorough investigation, you're gonna find people that, what I'm gonna start calling it, it's the rejects and the rookies over here. You're gonna have the people that are gonna go from department to department to department that aren't gonna be qualified, that you're gonna have unfortunately bad apples that aren't gonna want to be here if you don't treat them well. And then on top of that, you're gonna have the rookies that we've had in the last five years under different own, under a different chief, over thirty different officers that come in, they get their training, and they get out, and they go somewhere else. If you want stability, if you want people that get to know you in your neighborhood, come around and talk to you, know where you live, know things about you, say hi to your kids, not gonna be afraid of you. You're gonna want to keep us, you're gonna want to see that we have a lot of things to offer to you guys. I know I'm new to the city, and like, you know, just like the new council members, they have to prove themselves and do their part in making better tomorrow, so does the PD. I don't want it to have bad turmoil. I don't know what happened with the previous police department, the chief, and things like that, but we're new. I can't tell you that working for an amazing chief, Cantrell, who didn't have to step up and be chief, he took that position to help us out. He's so family-oriented, and he's so understanding. That saying where there's an open door, it's literally an open door. He'll work a holiday for you so I can be there with my newborn. He like goes above and beyond. We're trying to get more involved in the community. We are really trying to have more events, helping out local places. We're having a meeting at Food Row One Seventy-One. I'd really like you guys to come out. It's September twenty-third. We had a great outcome with Small Town Kitchen, they're fantastic. I want to see new faces, I want to be part of you guys, I want you guys to come up to me and say, "Hey, what's going on? Let's see your newborn, let's talk about it," you know? We're growing fast, so we need to get all on the same page. We want to be happy, you want to love where you live, let's do our part, and let's give everyone a chance. So, that's it.
Thank you, Officer Rizzo.
Hello, citizens and council members. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I can't say enough good things about the police department. Chief Cantrell, I think they do an awesome job, and I think the people that have spoken before me have said it all, so I can't really speak much about that. But I, or add to that, I did want to speak about Six H, which is Michael's application for city administrator, and I go back to his qualifications, and what we're requiring as a city is a highly qualified professional. I don't think, honestly, Michael's previous experience qualifies him in addition to the fact that as a city, sitting city council member, we did have a previous interim city administrator working when he resigned because of Michael's unprofessionalism in showing up to attend a meeting with Mr. Prible. He stated in his resignation letter that there were people in the city council that had their own agendas, and Michael was one of them, named in his resignation letter, and because Michael confirmed, and I was at the city council meeting three different times, Michael asked him if he would meet him first thing in the morning. Mr. Prible said yes he would, but Michael didn't show up, he didn't have the professionalism to call and let him know why he wasn't gonna be there, or that he was delayed a text, nothing. He didn't show up. That is total unprofessionalism, and I don't think we need that here in our city. I mean, we've got enough bad things going on and bad people speaking about our city now, and it makes me really sad, but I think we, there's somebody out there that, and I appreciate the work he's done, I do, but I don't think he's qualified, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodlow.
Good evening, council, and I just want to thank you guys for everything you guys are doing for the city, and I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Gray Cooper.
We don't have rules of procedure.
It doesn't bother me.
So, I'll leave that up to y'all.
Yeah, I don't mind.
It doesn't bother me? Yeah, it's fine. I can, and also, you guys have the option to allow my open comments to be done at the item of discussion. Your AG says you don't have to, but we have option to count and speak before the items discussion? Or do I need to speak out of the way?
I'm happy to let anybody speak anytime, as long as it's the rules. I mean, I don't want to break any law or anything.
Not during those four items.
Yeah, so the requirement is you speak before or during the discussion of the item, so you can do it now, or you can do it later. I mean, y'all could open this up again to everyone else to speak as well. And in general, all minutes should be the same for the item that's being presented. So, for your public hearing section right now, I think it'd be appropriate to do five minutes. If you want to open it up again at the agenda item for additional people to comment, you could do that.
Okay.
I'd like to work this out, please. Thank you.
Okay.
My item is...
F and G.
F and D. F and D.
Is Jake Houston out there by chance? Would anybody else like to speak that didn't sign up? This time, we'll have a presentation, two A presentation by Rhett Roden and Mason Irvin regarding a small animal hospital located at the corner of North Main, FM nine seventeen, and West Graham.
Hello? My name is Rhett Roden, and this is Dr. Mason Irvin behind me. I want to start by thanking the city council tonight and everyone who's shown up to support our city in how you see fit. The opportunity to highlight a very well-known member of our community who's highly thought of is a great opportunity, and so we appreciate it. Dr. Irvin has a track record for excellent care and customer service in treating you and your animals here in the city of Godly for several years at Godly Mobile Animal Clinic. I'm gonna turn it over to him and let him describe how he plans to service your animals in the future at his new location at one-on-one West Graham Street here in Godly.
Thanks, Rhett. Thanks, council members, for opening up your time to discuss a small business here in your community. I just kind of want to discuss what Godly Animal Clinic will be. So, we're leasing the space on West Graham to open a small animal hospital. And so, for the past two years, my business has been mobile-exclusive, which means we travel to homes around Godly and the surrounding communities to take care of the pets and livestock that they may have. We, just like many of the other small businesses in our community, have found that there are a lot of people moving here, and they're all moving with their pets. And so, we've decided to open a small animal hospital to greater, meet the needs of the community. Currently, we're the only other, we're the only veterinary service within the city of Godly, or that's... or that service the city of Godly. So we're, we're going to open a small animal hospital to service dogs and cats in Godly and the surrounding communities if they decide to come in. We're pretty excited that we're going to be offering, you know, modern technology in our, in our new clinic, so digital radiography, ultrasound, endoscopy, all very expensive, as I might say, and high-level veterinary medical equipment. We hope to expand our staff as well to, to meet the needs, because my services alone won't be able to meet the needs of the, the animals of the community. I hope, council members, that you will support our, support our business and encourage our business to grow. The city faces many animal problems that need to be addressed. I hope that I can work alongside the council members here to help address those. You know, main things that, of concern would be the zoonotic diseases such as rabies, bites, and then obviously the stray and unwanted animal problem. So we'll be offering services that help eliminate that. And we hope that, you know, y'all can take, take pride in what we're doing, and we hope that we can assist the city as well, because unfortunately, my business already has had to take on privately some of the problems dealing with animals. And most of that's just out of kind of kindness of our hearts. So I encourage y'all to, to continue to support small business and, you know, if y'all have questions about the small animal hospital or the services that we'll be offering, you know, I'm happy to take those.
I do. Are you, I have an agenda item tonight regarding strays. Are you going to, are you saying you'll be able to offer animal control services in, in some sense?
So, no, no, not initially, no. We can assist, and I've seen it in other cities where a veterinarian may have to assist, especially those animals that are especially dangerous and need medical intervention to be contained. I think that, you know, rabies quarantine and things like that may be able to be done at the facility, but it's, you know, it would have to be, we'd have to discuss it further, you know. Obviously, my time is spent with sick patients mostly, so my personal assistance would be limited.
Okay. So, Rhett, as you already know, I had to talk about a couple ordinances. Specifically, we already talked about the one fifty-four, which is the district. We need to talk about ninety-one dot zero six, which is animal noise, and chapter ninety-five, which is noise regulations. Just wanted to make sure y'all, sure y'all were aware. I didn't know if y'all were going to have outside kennels or anything like that, but...
Yeah, so, you know, we, we're purchasing indoor kennels, okay? We will need a yard of some sort for, you know, obviously outdoor walking and things like that, but we don't have any plans of extensive outdoor kennels. It's, it's mainly meant for medical treatment, we're not going to be offering boarding services. So medical boarding only. It'll be in the, the yard of the, of the facility. Oh, hours. Yeah, 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 so typically, the, obviously, morning walks whenever the staff arrives, and then they will do a last walk at the end of the day, and then throughout the day. So it'll mostly be between the hours of about seven and six.
I just think one of the concerns, I think it's a great idea, but I think one of the concerns that we've talked about was just the houses around it, that, again, the outside storage of animals not barking or any of that. So at night time, I think that was, so you answered that.
They'll be within the building. They'll only be within the building.
Well, thank you, and welcome to having a brick-and-mortar establishment.
Thank you.
This time, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Police Department slash Code Enforcement.
Go ahead. All right, for the month of August, the police department had two hundred eighty-six calls of service. Some of the calls that we have are seven accidents, five alarms, fifteen anti-patrol calls, one assault, eighteen assist counties or agencies, twelve assist motorists, thirty-one city ordinances, one kernel mischief resulting in a hundred fifty dollars worth of damage, two disorderly conducts, five disturbances, one fraud, one follow-up, one missing person that we were able to locate and find, sixty-seven PR contacts, twenty-nine public services, five reckless requests, six reckless drivers, one theft resulting in nine hundred dollars of destruction, twelve vehicle searches, and three warrant arrests that included one case being filed for felony.
Chief, I don't have that in my packet.
I emailed it over to Mayor Pro Tem Michael Peckus.
Fair enough.
We also received, had a total of two hundred eighty-five traffic stops, resulting in three hundred fifty-four total violations, seventy, one of them being citations, two hundred eighty-three of them being warnings. Any questions?
What were some of the code violations?
So some of them were, four of them were city properties for high grass and some trash, mainly behind Golly Heights. That was taken care of, the public works were able to take care of. But a lot of them are, again, are abandoned vehicles from people's properties and junk, junk vehicles.
Thank you. Fire Department.
Good evening, mayor and council. For the month of August, the fire department responded to twenty-nine incidents. By the way, this is a little bit updated numbers from what's in your packet because reports got completed and is this not in your packet? Okay. We have a total of a hundred and sixty-eight calls for August, twenty-nine fires, eighty-one rescue and emergency medical services, two hazardous conditions, twenty-one service calls, twenty-eight good intent calls, and seven false alarm and false calls. If you'd like, I can make you a copy of this and the breakdown sheet of, it's a little more specific, or if you'd like, I can read through that one too.
Yeah, just read through it, it's probably somewhere, I'm sure.
Okay. Some of them, when we input them in the computer, they get classified specific ways. Fire other was one, don't know what that might have been. Building fire, we had two. Trash or rubbish fire, three. Natural vegetation fire, two. So natural vegetation fire through brush fires are all going to be similar, some type of grass or wildland fire. That, natural vegetation fire other was two, forest woods or wildland fire, three. Brush or brush and grass fire mixture, eight. Outside rubbish fire, two. Medical assist, assist EMS crew is forty-four. That, for your understanding, is typically if we and AMR ambulance get on scene at the same time, then it's, we classify them as a medical assist, so that's forty-four. EMS call excluding vehicle accident with injury, twenty-three. That means we were on scene for an extended period before the ambulance arrived. Motor vehicle accident with injuries, four. Motor vehicle accident with no injuries, four. Power lines down, one. Arcing shorted electrical equipment, one. Person in distress, seven. Lockout, three. Water or steam leak, one. Smoke or odor removal, one. Assist police or other governmental agency, one. Police matter, one. Public service, one. Assist invalid, four. Unauthorized burning, two. Good intent call other, two. Dispatch and canceled in route, thirteen. No incident found on arrival at a dispatch address was eleven. Smoke scare, odor of smoke, one. Steam vapor, fog, or dust, thought to be smoke, one. Fossil armor, false call, seven.
Does lockout, should I interpret that as literally?
Generally, it's a vehicle lockout. We, we do not unlock vehicles unless there's an animal or a child inside the car. So that would have been the case with those, either animal or a child inside. Because of liability reasons, we don't just unlock cars for people on a routine basis anymore. Any questions for me? No? Is that it? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works.
Good evening, council, good evening, citizens.
Good evening.
This month, we have performed two hundred and thirteen locates. We have started getting inspection ready for TCQ, which can come at any time within the next three months. They'll give us a call and we'll be, they'll be here within a couple of days. With that, we're getting quotes for a few repairs and getting some water meters changed out. Sewer, we're continuing to flush and pressure clean sewer lines. Parks, mow, mowing has still slowed down. We've received a couple of bids from plumbers to repair the water fountains and sinks at the park. Streets, we have started filling some of the, the worst areas with rock asphalt in which pothole filling will continue. And then other than that, I have rece, I have received the authorization to take my wastewater Class C license by TCQ, and I've set the date of September fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three to test. Other than that, I got a phone call while I was waiting to come in here to do my, my portion. We do have a small leak coming from a meter in the one hundred block of South Sixth. It doesn't require an overnight response for overtime. It will be getting on to first thing, eight o'clock tomorrow morning.
Quick ques, question, sir, the, the hole that's at Graham and nine seventeen, is there a schedule on filling that in?
I've got pothole repair for, set for Friday of this week. So every week, we're going to have at least one day of pothole repairs, so that way we can get them done. Talked to Joshua's Public Works Director today, and they can't come and help us right now. They're stuck, and plus with, with the heat the way it is, it wouldn't do no good. We've got to do it sometime in the springtime, because if not, then the chip and seal is just not going to hold.
So we can't use that new fancy schmancy stuff that, I forget what it's called?
What they do is they come in and mill it, and then come back and just chip and seal. So we can't do any of that until the springtime, because if it's too hot, it won't hold. If it's too cold, it, it gets set too quick. So whenever I talked to him today, that's what he advised me of. Precinct One Commissioners, I'm still waiting for a call from them to find out from them when they will be able to, to help us out by coming and helping do it as well. So, I mean, other than that, I've got no more information on it. I mean, we're just going to keep trying to rock along with the rock asphalt. Better than nothing at this point.
And the gentleman's yard that's on Graham?
On Graham over here where we did the hydrant?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I'm waiting to be able to have money in the budget to be able to go get some topsoil in San Augustine. I don't want to put Bermuda mixed in with San Augustine, it wouldn't be right. We, we tore up San Augustine, so I would like to replace it the way it was or better.
Oh, sure.
Not so far.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Couple of, I don't know if it's last meeting or meeting before last, we talked, we had a grant guy in here about finding our valves and applying for it. Where we standing on that?
I got all the valves sent over to Glenn. So it is now in their hands, all the sizing of all of our valves and the locations have been sent over. So now, I don't know what y'all got going on, but it has been sent over to them. Speaking of that, Atlas Foundation will be here next week to do the foundation for well number nine. We're going to do a couple inches at a time, stop, and make sure everything's good, so.
On the grant, how we, our timeline is almost up. Where we at now on the grants, Glenn? Are we missed a grant, or are we still in run-ins for it? Right, we got to get bids out and all that, so. I'm writing it down, Glenn gave me an okay sign. Did you get the culvert changed out on Allen?
No, sir, the one at Allen and Seventh.
Yeah, still a hole there.
There's still a hole there. We're still trying to get ahold of who we can actually get a culvert from without spending an arm and a leg. If council wants to approve, I can get local pricing, and we could just buy one right now at this time, but that's up to council if y'all want me to get the pricing from local.
Is it dangerous?
It's not dangerous, it's just going to be way more expensive than if we go to a bulk purchase.
Because no danger of somebody driving over the hole at this time and causing this problems with the car or...
Right now, it's at a spot to where it's not going to cause danger unless somebody is cruising through there at a high rate of speed. I will say that.
I know we had discussed about the culvert, did we already approve purchasing culvert?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I thought we had, but...
So what are your options on getting a culvert?
Right now, we could wait and find out from East Texas a couple of bulk dealers on the price of getting bulk, or we can just go local and spend high money and get one right now and go ahead and get it knocked out.
So the reason it hasn't been done is because it's over the five hundred dollar threshold that council has to approve. Y'all want to direct staff to get one local, I think they were around seven hundred dollars?
They, they were between seven and a thousand dollars just for the culvert. That's not counting anything else that's needed.
And how much is the bulk price?
Bulk price, we could probably get bulk for three to four hundred a piece, but we would have to buy multiples.
How many do we need?
Well...
Now, how many do we need?
Right now, we probably need about two or three, to be honest with you. But actual emergency needs is just one at this time.
So we could almost get three for the price of one.
Let's do it, hard on them.
How long would it take if we ordered in the bulk?
I can't give you that answer right now, I can find out tomorrow morning and let you know.
It's hot, people walk in the evenings, it's going to be dark, someone's going to step in that thing and twist their foot.
Yes, sir.
So let's get it fixed.
In the meantime, I'll get over there and get some cones put up around it.
I authorize you to buy up to four, three, up to four culverts. That way we have them.
So whenever we talk about bulk from a mill out in East Texas, we're talking about an entire truckload of them? So anywhere from ten to twelve of them?
Then we just get one and be done with it. We're going to buy, if we can buy three or four, fine. If we're going to buy twenty, no.
The, the other problem with getting them from East Texas and only getting four is we're going to spend the money on heading over there and getting them more hot sauce. You'll be getting one at this time?
It's authorized them to spend up to a thousand dollars on a culvert and get it done. And I don't mean you buy a thousand-dollar culvert. Still get the best price of the city, but let's do it. It's been out there for a long time, we're talking about it.
Have you shopped them around local at different places to...
I've checked some of the pricing, I, I don't remember them off the top of my head, but most of them are staying close to seven to eight hundred.
I'm on with Roger, let's get it and get it fixed.
Sure, sounds good to me.
You have your direction, I'll, I'll buy it tomorrow once you send it to me.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank y'all.
Engineering.
Good evening, Council. Three things I'd like to visit with you all about this evening. We, uh, had a reported, last time it rained months ago, we had a, a, a high flow through the detention pond at the higher lengths subdivision. Since that happened, we have, uh, engaged the engineering firm that originally did the calculations. I've had another firm look over those calculations, confirm that the, the first company did a good job. I had an independent person come and look at them, at the calculations, and, uh, I've been out and investigated the, the pond itself, and it was constructed in accordance with the plans and in accordance with the, uh, flow numbers. We just had a freak flow. So I'm telling, letting you know that the pond has been constructed the way it's supposed to be, and it shouldn't be a problem in the future, but we never know. With the rainfalls we get, you know, we either get something or a whole lot. Uh, wastewater treatment plant operation was the main thing I wanted to talk to you all about tonight. I know that, uh, Kevin and his guys out there and Danny Patterson have been, uh, working as hard as they can to keep our wastewater treatment plant operating, but our wastewater plant is, uh, you may or may not know that I turn in the monthly reports to the, to the EPA and to the state of Texas on the wastewater treatment plants. So the test results from every week's testing that takes place down there, I have copies of. And I have noticed over the last four, five, one, two, three, three, five months in a row, we have failed to meet our, our discharge requirement on ammonia nitrogen. And ammonia nitrogen is a chemical that, that is a, it's a process, it's a part of the treatment system. We get it free. It comes in, and then we get it free going out, and there's some different ways to treat it. Mostly, it's treated with a lot of air. I've also noticed that on the agenda item later on tonight, we're, uh, discussing financing, the repair of, of some blowers down there. I've been down there, in fact, I was down there this evening before I came to the meeting, and we have four blowers down there, four compressor units. Two of them are in operation, two of them are sitting there gathering dust, and they're not hooked up in any way, shape, or form. When, when Kevin first came on as Public Works Director, he didn't know why they were sitting there. And we haven't yet determined whether the two blowers that are sitting there are functional or not, but they're sitting there not being used. We have a low amount of air flowing into our wastewater plant, and that's causing considerable problems. Our, our most recent test, we're tested on six different things at the wastewater plant. And four of those are coming back really good. And we're starting to, and, and the ammonia nitrogen is coming back really, really bad. We, we're permitted to discharge three parts per million of ammonia nitrogen. The last five weeks, twenty-eight, thirty-six, forty-three, twenty-six, and forty-one. The permit is for three. Every month I've turned this in, I get concerned because when I turn it in, I have to acknowledge that we're not meeting permit. Sooner or later, somebody's gonna wake up from their little COVID world, and they're gonna look at a computer screen, and somebody's gonna say, oh my, let's go bounce down on top of Godly's head and hit them with a fine. I don't want us to be put in that position. I'd like y'all's okay to work with Kevin to see if we need more air down there, and if we need more air, it's gonna be ten to twenty thousand dollars to get another compressor of the type we need. I've told him repeatedly, if you need more air or you need something else, let me know, and I'll bring it to council. Because I, 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 sometimes I feel like if I bring it to you and I say it's an urgent need, it gets your attention a little bit more quickly than he says, oh, I got some stuff that's not working just right. Just saying, okay? Cause I'm not gonna come in here and holler wolf if there's not a wolf coming down the street. We have a pneumonia problem. We, Kevin, myself, and our hired operator need to do something to get that taken care of. It's been brought to my attention five consecutive months, and I've mentioned it to Kevin in emails, and I've mentioned it to Danny in emails, and we're still having problems. Now, we pay Danny as a, as a consultant and a contract laborer to come out and, and operate our wastewater treatment plant. And right now, I'm not thrilled with what we're getting. And he knows it. I mean, we've discussed it. So we've gotta do something in that direction. We, uh, have at times in the past, s- two of y'all have been on the council when we've spent twenty to eighty thousand dollars to haul sludge out of that wastewater plant. We're almost to that point. We have in our construction of our new wastewater plant, we had one dump basin for, for sludge. We now have three, and we still have a tank full of sludge. So I don't know whether we're producing extra sludge or whether we're not managing it quite properly. We probably need somebody from the manufacturer of the equipment that came out to come out here and show our guys what needs to be done in order to get sludge out of that plant more quickly. Cause we're getting a lot of sludge, we're hauling sludge. We don't wanna put ourselves back in a position where we were eighteen months ago where we're spending eighty thousand dollars and having tanker trucks haul up and down from here to Austin, five times a day with sludge in them. Now, for the good news, our new wastewater-
All that is, you think the blowers is all we need, or we need something else?
I don't know. I don't know. I may have to train an operator to go to an anoxic oxic condition out there. I don't know. At this time, Roger, I can't answer you.
But we definitely need the blowers.
We need more air.
We need more air. Yes.
So would it be beneficial to, like you just said, to have the manufacturers come in and give us advice on, do we spend the money on the blowers? We talked about another aerating system, uh, installed that I guess is a new, new thing. So should we get that advice before we spend the money on the blower? Try to get that done as quick as possible?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And, and, you know, I have people that I can call and get in here that know what they're doing. Kevin's probably got some people on speed dial that he can talk to. I mean, we just, we need some expertise. Somebody that plays in poop all day long.
Yeah.
Okay, and understands it.
The blowers or just regular compressor, regular mo- small motors with the?
They're, they're pretty good sized.
Yeah, but they're regular air compressors with the motor.
We've got two local, uh, wastewater plant right now that are not in operation. One is actually hooked up, and all we gotta do is get the, the electrician to hook up, and it'll be ready to go. Uh, we had the compressor guy come out and take a look at it to give us a bid, and he turned it, it's not frozen or anything like that. So I've got a, part of the agenda tonight is give them the quote to try to get authorization to get that hooked up and get it running.
Let's get it running. And that'll help us test the theory as far as air goes?
If he's gonna, if he's got an elect, we've got an electrician on site at the wastewater plant.
I've done a lot of research on it, and it, it, everything that, that's saying is it need more air. So I think at least getting one of them done right away is gonna help tremendously.
And I think this is something we've been talking about for a month or so, like, what we've been waiting on till he was trying to get multiple bids, but we're finding it's kind of a narrow market there, so.
That is correct. It is. Now, we have five new blowers on our new wastewater treatment plant expansion. There's two blowers, or two blowers on the old wastewater plant that we're re, re, reconditioning, and there's three blowers on the new plant. And there's two blowers identical to these sitting inside our building right now that are not, you know, the one is hooked up now. The second one is not, and, and I don't know what happened, but about four operators ago, some, uh, a salesman came in and convinced that operator that the type of blowers that we have down there today would be better than what we had previously. But we're putting in five more of what we had previously, so. I wasn't involved in that decision. That was a decision made by a former council, and I, I assume it came before council, but it was, uh, it was a, an operator long, long ago, several years back. The construction on the new wastewater treatment plant is, is slowing because of the heat. Most of the work is outdoors now. There are no buildings. There's one building. I didn't put an air conditioner in it, cause I don't want those guys relaxing down there. And he knows. I mean, that's what it is. I mean, it's, uh, it's hot to work, and we're not getting very many hours a day out of construction. We've got a pay request right now that's, I'm just down there looking at the plant this evening, and I'll have that pay request to you tomorrow or the day after, and they're not asking for much money right now. I mean, it's, it's, there's not much going on, to be perfectly frank with you. We know that we're not gonna be ready to hook up and go until December sometime, so nobody's doing anything right now.
Hook up and go, meaning fire it up?
Crank it up.
So at that point, we'll be able to use it in combination with the old one, right? Or no?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes. We'll be able to use the two older ones. We'll be able to use the one that was built in ninety-three, ninety-one. The ninety-one, the two thousand and seven, and now the twenty twenty-three plant. They'll all be able to run at the same time. We don't need them. Flow wise, we don't need them.
Yeah.
But we'll have a-
What's our capacity gonna be when all that's done?
Four hundred and sixty thousand gallons a day, which is approximately actually gosh, at today's flows, we're gonna be more than double what we have right now. We're running right now on a, on a really wet day, one eighty to two hundred thousand gallons a day, and we'll be able to treat four sixty, four hundred and sixty thousand.
Do you have AC?
Sir?
Do you have AC in your office?
We got, we got the wind begins right now. I start to cool down, so we're doing that now until we're able to get one in. But, uh, what I would like to do is remember that new plant is able to come online. I'd like to switch over to it and get the plant that is in right now cleaned up, any kind of repairs taken care of, and anything like that, cause that thing's been running consistently. Probably at least ten years.
Two thousand and seven.
So since two thousand and seven. So I would like to get switched over to where all the flow vision of the new plant, so we can take this one down and do maintenance, do cleanup, you know, get everything fixed up on it. That's what Glenn's blessing was, it's good.
How is the brush repair?
Uh, I got a quote in by email today. Uh, it's only one company that we can get that he wants a quote in, but it's looking a little over two thousand dollars to go in and put the brush on it. We've already got the brush. So as soon as we get the brush, to where, as soon as we get authorization to get that brush put on, then it'll be put on, and that'll help tremendously with our, uh, solids going into the plant.
So what authorization are you waiting for?
Uh, I didn't get the quote until today, so I couldn't put it in the agenda for tonight.
It's two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
It's above our five hundred threshold.
I guess my question too would be, what do we need to do so that every little thing like this doesn't have to come before the council? I mean, how do we give them a little larger threshold for things like this issue? I mean, everything over five hundred dollars, they're come, I mean, it's like, it's, well, how do we control that a little less and let them control that? Their department heads, we should trust them with that? So how do we fix that?
Credit card.
Well, our credit cards. Well, you don't even talk about credit cards, do we?
New ones with expanded limits.
So I'm just-
In the past, basically, what we've done is, is, that's all run through from their department head through the city administrator.
Can we do something like purchase orders through, I mean, something like that with, like you said, the city administrator, so the, all, all this is not, they're not having to wait so long, they're not having to delay purchases, we're not bogged down with all this, and I don't mean it in a valid, but all these ti- tiny things that you guys should be handling, we should, it's a day-to-day operation. That stuff is maintenance. Why should we be having to prove? Yeah. So how do we, how do we get around that? How do we fix that?
You authorize me to make those payments, and we can do purchase orders. We haven't done them in the past. Um, there is an option in in code where we can do POs. But y'all just have to say yes and-
Do we need an ordinance? Do we need something calling to do that so that it makes purchasing a little bit less macro manageable?
Yeah, I think you hit it on the nose earlier when you said you need a city administrator.
Okay.
Cause that would generally be the role of the administrator. So all these policies the administrator could put in place, that y'all could bless it, and then expenditure authority could go through the policy ordinance.
So will they still have to go to the city administrator for every five hundred dollars they wanna spend, or is that something that he could put in a policy to do POs?
Yeah.
Or he or she, sorry.
Sure, we could look at, we can look at revising your ordinances, amending policies. Um, a lot of municipalities have expenditure authority up to fifty thousand dollars for competitive bidding under state law. Others, um, limit their town manager or their city administrator down to, you know, five thousand. So it just depends on what you wanna do as a council.
We'll work on it.
I'm gonna say it's a little ridiculous that they have to come to me for everything over five hundred, and then I have to come to y'all for everything over five hundred.
Well, yeah, I just feel like it just delays the, I mean, those are things that need to be done like now.
Weekly meetings, it helps a little bit, but that's not gonna last forever.
Yeah.
Any questions, somebody? I'm just running engineering.
Sorry.
No.
One question. A while back, there was the, uh, fire hydrant inside the fence over on the corner.
Still there.
We're not moving it. Will we find out why it was covered over, or anything? Why it was pinched in?
At the last meeting that I attended that we discussed that, you instructed the representative of Toast that was here that evening if she could look into it for you to see, we Dean, we have a fire hydrant that's behind a private fence, and the owner of the private fence has said, touch my fence, I sue the city. It's my fire hydrant. Which we all know was not his fire hydrant. The fire hydrant's built within the right of way of the Farm and Market Road. He's just extended his fence out.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question.
Is it, is it in the right of way? Sounds like it would. Okay, send me the information.
We'll take care of that, Roger. Between Dean and I, we'll get that done for you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Do we need to do something with Kevin, giving him the X number amount to, uh, get those blowers running? Get those blowers running?
Yes, um, we also need to give him authorization to, our staff direction to do the two thousand dollars for the screw conveyor, unless we wanna put that on the September twelfth agenda, but
I just wanna get-
It's something we need.
Give him direction.
We gotta have, I don't want TK Green, TK, I don't want any, uh, agency coming over and finding us, and then we still gotta turn around and spend the money anyway. So let's get it fixed.
And that's for the, that's for the brush?
We'll start with two numbers that will left in the pot. I will promise you that. I'll say it for you.
I'm double-doubt shit. I know what their fines are. I'm sure it'll be about the same.
This year is gonna be the same, Larry.
Is that for the brush? You're talking about for the brush?
The brush is over, what, twenty-three hundred, you said?
Two thousand sixty?
I think it's like twenty-six hundred or over twenty-six hundred, if I'm not mistaken. I looked at it this morning.
And you gotta have it.
I gotta have that brush, absolutely. Man, it's on it. All, e- everything that's going into the plant. We're not picking up any fine grit. We're not picking up any, uh, rags, grease, none of that. It's all just free flowing into the plant right now. And it's killing our bugs, in which our bugs will need people alive to help feed the bacteria.
So you have the brush. This is for the install?
I got the brush, cause it's already purchased, the brush.
So what do-
Sign, go buy it.
What about, what about the blower? What do, what do we decide? Can we get that blower up and running? I mean, we've been waiting long to talk about that.
Mayor, Mayor Broton, before y'all.
We're looking for the electrical, electrical blower.
Mm-hmm.
You just thought it's very, most precise.
Yeah.
If y'all, if y'all are, well, hold on, hold on. If y'all are worried about expenditure authority, isn't there an agenda item, or agenda next week? Is there an agenda next week?
There is a meeting.
A meeting next week, that's what I mean. Why don't, why don't y'all bring it back as individual items for approval for the council? Cause what I'm hearing is a lot of numbers for items that- Because what I'm hearing is a lot of numbers for items that.
So you're saying.
Are generally identified under this category, but probably not specifically under the, the category. Be more appropriate to bring them back as individual items that you can vote on.
Even the one there, we need to, the two, the twenty?
So what is your, what's your expenditure authority right now?
So by policy, it's a thousand. It was changed last year to five hundred.
Yeah. But who can, who can execute contracts right now for the city?
Me?
Just you? Yeah. So let's, I say with these items, I mean, I understand he has direction to go out and get bids. But I think it'd be appropriate for him to bring them back so that you can vote on them.
I've got bids for the blower tonight.
Okay.
Bid for the brush for tonight.
Yeah. So, but it's not on the agenda, right?
So what do you?
The blower is on.
Oh, the blower is on the agenda. Okay, okay. So let's, let's stick with the agenda and bring these other ones back.
So you'll have to bring that one back on the table?
I tried.
Sorry, we tried.
Thank you.
Dean's like, I'm the bad guy.
Negotiating.
So for the city administrator, economic development portion, surety bonds have been obtained for all the police officers that expire August twenty-third, twenty twenty-six. Our cybersecurity training for fiscal year twenty-three has been completed and submitted to the state. We have in our possession an R F Q for a forensic audit that we'll go through and then I'll present it at the next meeting. And now we need to talk about some water issues. So in your packet, in the loose leaf, you were given a list that was redacted. It should be about twenty, thirty pages long.
The account aging report?
Yes. Should be in the second paper out there. Yes. So we currently have about, we sent out in our last billing cycle for water that we're going to start shut offs this month. It's supposed to start on the fifth. We've decided to move it to Thursday to give them a little bit extra time. We made an additional Facebook post today about it. We have about, just for accounts that are over sixty days, we have about twenty-six thousand dollars worth of water bills.
Where is that?
Right.
So if you look on the.
On the page.
One of the very last, third to last page, it'll give you the exact amount, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. And on the copies y'all have, um, they're redacted, so that way you can't see account numbers or names. But those are all the accounts. They range from anywhere from a couple hundred dollars all the way over to a thousand. And in totality, they equal that, they're twenty-six thousand. So the reason why I bring this up is because the other paper that you got that's labeled arrangement agreement in ENCODE where we can set up payment arrangements and it'll automatically track those. So this is an actual example that we did today. Um, it's actually on my account. So it gives the account number, name, and service address up top. The amount due on arrangements right above the signature line, how many active arrangements we have, and like if I, if I owe six hundred dollars and I can afford to pay this two ninety-six, twenty-one, that would be put on file. And then that's a short term. I'll have to pay off that additional and as more comes up, as water bills are put out, but I'll sign this and then we may make an arrangement or a contract that will say I can pay my water bill plus one hundred dollars, so that way I can catch up over a period of time. Because some of these, they're businesses and personal, a thousand dollars, so I'm afraid that they're not going to be able to pay those just Thursday where I cut off their water. I don't want to be heartless. Some of these haven't paid their bills half of this year.
Thirty-two thousand dollars, six, thirty-two, six, one, six, oh, five?
Or what, what are you looking at?
Uh, page one, two, three, if you look at all of the front and back. Anyway, no, no, I don't mean to interrupt. Go on.
So what I would like to do is set up arrangements and allow people to call in and, or come in and say, hey, this is what we would like to do. And we either do a one-time arrangement or we do a longer contract if it's a larger amount. Apparently, we don't have anything in place for that. It's just thirty days and your water's cut off. We haven't done a cutoff this entire year. So this will be our first one. I'm trying not, there's fifty-six different accounts that are over sixty days old. Really don't want to throw off fifty-six people's water.
All right. So if I'm interpreting this correctly, each redacted section is, that's one account?
Yes.
An apple from here, that's one account. Okay, I got you now. I see.
So I understand what you're saying and I mean, I'm, again, like you said, I'm not heartless. But ones that are sixty days overdue and they haven't made any type of arrangements, not five dollars in good faith, nothing. We have people that are taking complete advantage because the city's been closed down and have not bothered to come back. Unfortunately, we have businesses that have taken advantage of this. So, uh, to me, when does it become a theft of service? When they're not paying for the water? Because in the meantime, we're paying for it. The citizens are paying for it. If they don't pay for their water, then who's paying for it? And I understand hardships can happen. The hardships don't happen for nine months and not make a payment. I think some good faith.
I agree, and that's why we did sixty days back. I know on, like, some of my billing cycles, like we checked today. I didn't get charged last month, but I got charged this month. So my entire amount for those two months went on this bill. Yeah, it's been doing like that since Kathleen was here. Um.
You didn't get charged for last month?
I didn't get charged for last month and pull it out. So then it put it on this month's. And it's auto paid. It's been auto paid since I lived here.
Well, that doesn't make sense because we have an auditor doing all the paperwork. So why would it not come out?
Well, that's what she found. Um, there's been some accounts that were drastically overcharged and we're working on those to get them fixed. And I think there's only one or two of those in here. But to expect people to pay eight, nine hundred dollars by tomorrow is kind of hard.
But is it? Because we didn't just give notice. We did this, gave notice over a month ago and the ones that didn't even attempt to do it, once the notices went out on website, on their water bills, when, when do you consider we're being taken advantage of? And enough is enough. And again, I have a heart. I'm, if they came in and said, hey, I'm trying to make payments, even here's five dollars in good faith, something. But when you have people taking advantage because we're allowing it, then who's paying for the water?
So yes, I, and that's why I proposed they come in and pay fifty percent of their total bill. And then from there, they pay X amount of dollars on top of their bills.
So you want to give them another, how long, a month, grace period to take care of these items? They get a letter in the mail? Hey, take care of it or October fifth, your fault, your water's cut off period? Have made some kind of arrangement?
I mean, I'm still going with the Thursday deadline of cutting off their water, but I want them to call and come in and make arrangements.
But everyone's going to say, oh, well, I thought the city was shut down. Oh, I haven't got a bill. And my, my, I was going to come up with some excuse and blame the city on it.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to take that excuse out of the equation?
Well, yeah, because the door's been open since, uh, May that I know of. So where are these people paying their bills since May?
Yeah. If you didn't get a bill, you just pay what you paid the month before and keep going.
I mean, that's almost twenty-six thousand dollars. We're, we're sitting here complaining about money. I mean, about our budgets and that's twenty-six thousand dollars that we're allowing just to keep. We're just going to let them go another month and another month and.
Well, no, we're going to shut off their water unless they make an arrangement.
How did we notify them? Have orders of process and notifying them to come in here before we do?
We put it on the last water bill and we put it online on their water bill saying, and we even put the date, gave them a month.
Well, just Stephanie?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, I asked Rocker's question. Have you notified them?
Yes.
And have you contacted them back though? Because people don't open their water bills and reach them.
Yes, that was a discussion today. Yes, to actually call them and, and make contact.
And they don't necessarily do this.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. And, um,
Take your time.
Have you, um, researched the addresses to see if they are rental properties and that person has moved out, moved in? Because that happens a lot too.
Uh, the auditor that's here, that's auditing, is, this list is from them. So I don't know how depth the research.
They have to know.
To call and.
If you moved in a house previously, if they moved off because they have been known to have, and they moved off, someone else moved in.
Uh-huh.
And they're like, oh, the water's gone, so we don't have to do anything. So they just continue to use that water.
Uh-huh.
So I found the best way in the past was to try to get a phone number, contact them, identify what the situation is, and then try to.
Yeah, we had talked about that today, trying to do that, make contact. I said the same, that it would be best, because like you said, they don't always open the water bill. They don't look online. So maybe. I don't know.
How many people we talking about? Looks like, uh.
I think there was fifty, fifty-something, fifty-six, I believe. And that's just that are over sixty days.
And as far as businesses, there's no reason why businesses shouldn't be paying. I mean, they're still in business, so they know better, you know? So I think it's a matter of, they're just derelict in their duties to come pay their bill. And they just, to me, they're not.
I, um, just want to touch on, I did talk to my business partner and asked her if we were receiving a bill. And from what she and I discussed, I think I probably need to come have someone look at our account, because I don't have a good account. We need to, sorry. Uh, we could previous person set the account.
Okay. We'll take a look at that.
Well, this isn't an action item. I just wanted y'all to kind of give me some feedback on what y'all wanted.
I like the idea of phone calls to the people if we can get ahold of them. And I like the idea of checking if it's rental property. And definitely checking to see if, since the city's, uh, responsible, the city didn't do something wrong, like set up an account properly.
Okay, so this is one of the things that was brought up when we talked about calling, is who's going to make these phone calls? As a council member, can I make those phone calls to find out? Or is this something that we have to dump onto our court clerk along with everything else that, you know?
Yeah, I'd say it'd definitely be more appropriate for staff to do it.
Well, she's the only one.
She's the only one. I realize that. Uh, you do have an ordinance. It looks like it was updated in two thousand nineteen. And that's, uh, section fifty point zero three. And it, and it outlines the procedure for disconnection and, and how, uh, hearing and disputing correctness of the bill can be made.
Under normal circumstances, I'd say follow that, but since it's been such a mess, I would rather make an extra step. If we have to hire temporary labor to come here and make phone calls for it, I don't care.
What was that number again? Fifty what?
Fifty point zero three. And also, I'm also aware that the, I believe it's D S H S, where the state has a program that will allow people who are getting behind on their bills to, to receive payments. Um, I don't recall what the program is called, but I'm aware of it from other cities. So just keep that in mind. I think it's possible Johnson County might already participate in the program.
And what is that you don't know?
Uh, I want to say it's with D S H S and it was part of a COVID initiative. So I don't know if it's still applicable. As of a year ago, it was though.
So maybe if we make, let's find out about that before we make the phone calls, offer that if they're in need of assistance. Here's a number to call and that way we're trying to help solve it, but we're solving it on this end. But again, like you asked, what is the deadline? When do we say it's time to cut off?
Sometimes it takes a cut off to get their funding.
Well, that's kind of what, after the phone call, if we don't hear anything, what, in a week? After the phone call?
Well, we can't, I don't want to set a date that we're going to do this until we figure out if who's going to do the phone calls, who's going to do the research. I mean, we can't sit there and say we're going to do this in two weeks and then we haven't, I got anybody to make the phone calls or anything.
No, I, I, I can, the auditor will have us that information by tomorrow. She's that good. She's that quick. If, I mean, I'll, I'll have to ask her and she'll have it. So as far as the contact stuff. Now, as far as the phone calls, that's something that we'll have to speak to our court clerk and see if that's something that she's willing to, uh, contribute and help. And I mean, I'll, I'll try to help fill in other areas, watch if she can do that for us. It's just, that's a lot. That's one person.
Mr. Reyes, did you have a comment?
With all due respect, and I know what y'all are trying to do, help people out, these people here, they were the people. Okay, so y'all want to make a tough call.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's fair to let somebody on with all that, that work. They knew they were doing it. Whether they were the landlords or not, they knew it. Everybody needs a bill. And just like I said, that's half an officer's salary. Okay, if you think about money, I would think it is a punishment because it's not shared with the people. And I'm not, and I know it's a whole lot and it's a hard job to do. But, but what I would do is cut the water off and then we have an option, I'm continuing to put it on.
Yeah.
I would do it the reverse way so that they know, hey, we're on top of it, you know, and, and the excuse of this being shut down is gone.
Hmm.
And we're, we're back to this, and that's just my.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. And I'm, like what Stephanie said, I think maybe the shock and awe will make them come, turn the water off. And if we turn it off, and that's what we talked about today, not to shut it off on a Friday, so they don't go all weekend without it. Shut it off maybe on a Monday. Hey, now you can come in on Tuesday. We can have it turned back on Tuesday evening or Wednesday, so that, yeah. But we're not cold-hearted here, but did I not say today the same thing that gentleman just said, that that's a half a salary that the people owe? And even though we can't apply the salaries, it's still money owed to the city.
Hey, if we turn the water off, like you, you've already noticed that, but notified everybody, we turn it off tomorrow, right? If we turn the water off, we have to have the staff at the city hall to take care of the people that come up there saying, my water's turned off and I don't know why.
We do. We do.
We do.
Yes.
Ah.
And we don't, the court clerk and the auditor's here all week. And she's taking payments and processing, so it's, they can do that.
Kevin, do you have someone to spend all day turning the water off and run back the next, within the next couple hours, turn it back on?
It's all planned.
Tomorrow planned, all day for water disconnects, and the next day set for, uh, changing meters and turning waters back on.
Yeah, we already had it all planned out.
Okay.
We're not up against any state mandates. For example, turning off your electricity right now probably wouldn't be allowed. So that's true, I assume?
Yeah, so you have your ordinance. It gives you a process for disconnection?
I meant, you know, if we, okay.
Yeah, no. No, but again, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this, this is emergency financial assistance. This is a, a program with the state. But it's mostly for folks that are, uh, low, very low income, that have trouble paying bills altogether.
Yeah, I found two as well, one being Texas Utility Hill and the other being Texas Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program. So I did do a whole lot of research on it, but I can, maybe for people that do need help.
So would fifty oh three prevent us from doing shut offs tomorrow?
I mean, it just depends on when you send the bill and.
We sent the notice.
When payment is due. Mm-hmm. So I think that's the, the list he's pointing out there is, looks like a lot of people fit in the category of the ordinance.
So y'all good with me shutting off water tomorrow and that gives them?
So what happens if tomorrow you shut Stephanie's water off and she has not got a bill because it didn't take care, because it wasn't taken care of in our city hall?
We'll fix it.
Then we'll fix that issue whenever she brings it to our attention. I can't go through.
I understand.
Well, our, our auditor is the one that's running these, these bills and these um, these reports, and she's a utility auditor. So I would hope that everybody got their bills. I would hope, unless they got lost in the mail.
I can see uh, kitchen, chisms, some places would lose a day if they didn't, you know, if, if it's their own fault.
Well, we might take an opportunity to see who it is. If it's STK or if it's chisms or something like that, it's probably a mistake. Let's call them first. If it's a residence, shock and awe.
What if it's a business that has been addressed before?
You can't play a favor.
No? Why not?
Turn water.
No!
You can't sit there and say, I'm gonna turn your water off.
We're going to, we're gonna turn them off tomorrow.
Yep.
They can call, we'll get it turned back on. If they call early enough, same day.
Okay.
And if there's a circumstance that's uh, like you said, we'll consider it when they come back in. And if that's the case, then we'll take it case by case.
Are y'all good with arrangements if people need that?
Yes.
I guess so. I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. And that is done. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item A, discussion and possible action on the confirmation of Alexa, I have to pronounce her last name.
Navarrete.
How do you say her last name?
Roger Johnson.
How do you say your last name? Okay, discussion and possible action on the confirmation, confirmation of Alexa Navarrete, right, okay. As a godly police officer pending graduation from the police academy.
Make a motion to approve item six A in its entirety.
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Oh. Best of luck on your case.
Oh, yes ma'am. Thank you, thank you.
Ask a question?
Yeah.
Where'd she go? Item B. Oh. Discussion and possible action on the confirmation of Gustavo Rojo as a godly police officer pending graduation from the police academy.
That's some grip.
Yeah.
So before you make a motion, are, are you bilingual?
Yes, sir.
And the last one was bilingual, correct?
Yeah.
That'll be an asset to our department.
Yeah, I read that already.
It's not all about you, Scott.
Oh, yes, it is.
Anybody have any questions?
So can I ask why you chose godly?
Yes, sir. I thought Godly was gonna ask her the same thing. Community here, I vote, since I was a kid, I wanted to be a cop. And um, I saw Rodney and I was like, I wanna be there, I wanna give that to the community.
Well, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the confirmation of Gustavo Rojo as a godly police officer pending graduation from the police academy.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
When will you be graduating?
We take the test date soon and graduate date soon, sir.
Uh, these two people, no experience.
No.
I know. How are you going to place them in the police department? Doing what, how, when, and with who?
So they'll be going with phases, uh, FTO phases, first phase, second phase, third phase, fourth phase, ghost phase. So they'll probably, they'll start off with, uh, one will start with, both start on nights, one will start with Officer Morgan, one will start with uh, most likely Officer Templar. Starting off with them. They'll do four weeks with them, and then we'll rotate them to another officer. And they'll rotate between three or four officers. And then they'll finish up with sergeant on ghost phase. And then if they pass each phase, they'll be off FTO program.
And they all, y'all have all discussed this with them? If everybody's okay, they understand the situation and what they must do?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you, ladies.
For both of y'all, once you um, pass your academy, I'll sign your commission paperwork.
Ms. Navarrete? I think it's Navarrete. I messed up. I think someone had some questions.
I just wanted to ask you the same thing, why you chose godly?
No, it's, it's been a while, but I'm sure there's um, she was reaching to be how it is as a family tree.
Hmm.
I've always, I have a family, but I've always liked to be a part of another.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate your answer.
Item C, discussion and possible action on the confirmation of Alexandra Rizzo as a godly police officer.
So I saw Officer Rizzo yesterday. And uh, once again, she dropped by to make sure I was okay because I was laying under a car. The first time I saw her, I was laying under a car and she was uh, very sweet and, and. Truck broke down in the hardware store parking lot, so I had to get Connie to come down there and tow it. Officer Rizzo said, hey, why don't you let my husband come and, and he'll help you get it. So I thought that was very nice. And then I think yesterday you were just kinda joking around. I saw you under a car, so I thought I better stop. Um, and then later on, I went to Spring Market and I drove down to Allen and I saw Officer Rizzo at Stephanie's house. Out chatting, just in the community. And I thought, that's special. I liked that a lot. And so uh, I make a motion to uh, approve or to confirm Alexandra Rizzo as a godly police officer. And also, by the way, looking through her folder, she has commendations of quite a few from the previous police departments.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Welcome to Godly.
This is a matter of paperwork. We did the I's and cross our T's before.
This is a matter of these two pieces of paper not being filled out.
Can we just lump all these together and be done with it?
I wish, but the uh, we have to do it individually.
Aye.
Discussion and possible action on the confirmation of Spencer Templar as a godly police officer. Make a motion to approve the confirmation of Spencer Templar as a godly police officer.
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item E, discussion and possible action on the confirmation of Scott Morgan as a godly police officer.
I have a question. I have a comment on what I've heard. I was, I was driving in, I was listening to the comments from the people. I've also seen other people sit there and say, oh, the uh, we need help with our police department. I've confirmation these people, these officers, I'm gonna go for, I'm fine with it. If anyone comes up and says you have a problem with an officer, do not go to Facebook. Come up here, sign in, register a complaint. So number one, it can be looked at and talked about and proper, handling it proper. Not throughout the deal. If you have a problem and it's something that can be backed up, it needs to be, they won't. The chief is gonna wanna know about his officers, we're gonna wanna know about the officers too. Handle it that way. Get signed something that says I have a problem with this action. It may not be the policeman itself, it may just be an action at one time. That's my, that's where I'm, that's all I can say, buddy. That's all I would say. Keep on going.
I'd like to make a motion to confirm Scott Morgan.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item F, discussion and possible action on the confirmation of Jeremy Arbenoff as a godly police officer. Now, we did allow Mr. Cooper to talk before the item.
Mm-hmm.
So. You get five.
Five. I'll make it quick, sorry.
Thanks.
I'm asking that you consider not confirming Chief Cantrell and Sergeant Arbuthnot tonight. I'm asking you make the hard right choice over the easy wrong. This is a subjective versus objective issue. I want you to objectively look at whether or not they should be confirmed. Police officers place their lives in harm's way to serve and protect the public. We all owe them a debt of gratitude. They should be celebrated and honored. They selflessly work long hours, late nights, long weekends. Their families are also owed a debt of gratitude for sharing their loved ones with us. The community and worrying every day as their fathers, sons, mothers, daughters go to work and potentially face dangerous and deadly situations every day. Everything I just said is beyond contestation and no one's denying those facts. That being said, it's also important to remember that society has granted police with very specific powers. These powers need to be respected and never abused. To arrest, cite, and basically make the decision to suspend or revoke rights of freedom. Can be, result in personal freedoms being suspended and result in citizens being placed in jail, separated from their families, and harm reputations. Those powers that we authorize police to exercise mandate that they are one hundred percent truthful and honest. They cannot be abused. Because of the powers we grant them, they must be beyond reproach. This is not a subjective thing. This is objectivity that needs to be looked at here. Uncorruptible they must be. They must exercise the highest of moral and ethical standards. Most do and thank you for that. They must live a more honest and integrity-driven life. We should uphold them to higher standards because of the powers they're granted. Never give them a pass when they violate this trust, when they abuse the powers we've granted them. When they allow themselves to fall victim to being used potentially as a political weapon, consequences are mandated. You cannot foster or condone a culture of corruption. As elected officials, unfortunately at times, you may have to make really hard decisions that possibly will come at a cost. Some decisions, the right, honest, and integrity-driven decisions are a lot harder than the easy wrong decisions. Undoing a bad decision to right a wrong sometimes is not cheap, easy, or popular. But if it is the right moral and ethical decision, should you make it? Yes, I think you should. I think you as a council are up to that task and I, and I think you can weather that storm. I think if the old council made terrible decisions, you are strong enough, moral enough, to have enough integrity to not allow it to continue. You will fix it and right that wrong. I'm gonna go into detail of a chain of events here. December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, at seven forty-five hours, Jessica Hill filed a complaint alleging Jennifer Thompson falsified a document. In the arrest affidavit, a sworn document that's upholdsable and enforceable by perjury. It was stated that the agenda was posted ten hours after her interview. She also referred to things that happened on Facebook that didn't happen until the weekend. It's impossible for her to be interviewed for stuff that hadn't happened yet. She, emails were provided and all were sent out after the interview occurred. The interview at seven forty-five had not been sent yet. The inter, the emails were sent at ten thirty-seven, seventeen twenty-two, seventeen forty-five, on to the same day. They can't be sent after she was interviewed. This is either gross incompetence or it's criminal. It's one of the two, nothing more. It could be either one. But here's the deal. Jen Thompson was also never interviewed. You always interview the subject of the, of the investigation at the end. She was never afforded that opportunity. I have provided extensive documentation that questions the integrity of the affidavit. And our competency of Sergeant Arbuthnot up to criminal investigations. Are they incompetent or are they criminal? April fourth, the former mayor stated that a week prior to that, they were both promoted. They're technically still on probation per your city ordinance. They're still on, on probation for six months. They haven't been confirmed yet. They haven't had a commission yet. You can undo this. Please, however you decide to do it, objectively look at it, remove the subjective, subjectiveness out of this. You worry about liabilities. If you co-sign this stuff with pending litigation, you have to factor in how that's gonna play out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
May I speak? May I speak?
No, you've got your turn.
Well, you can speak on the I, I'm gonna do this because Mr. Cooper just got me.
I wasted my earlier time down when I was going to.
You had to sign up.
I did. I signed up and I waited, I waited for you to speak in the beginning and I asked permission to speak at that timing. I didn't ask for extra time at both events.
Counsel?
Yeah, does she have a speaker card? I mean, is that the question? Or did you speak before?
Yes, she spoke at the beginning.
Okay. So typically the way this is run, I mean, you, you speak during public comment section or you can withhold your comments till the actual item is on the agenda. If y'all as a legislative body wanna open it up to everyone else to speak, you can do that and it's within your discretion. Otherwise, you've received the cards, you've received the comments, so you can decide.
Do we give our advice? I personally would like to hear everybody out. Whoever would like to speak on these subjects, I'm gonna go start.
Well, I get more time, two minutes for about that.
Hey, could we not do this at the beginning of meetings whenever we have everybody sign up?
Right, but counsel just said we have an option to hear anyone, so if you would like to speak too, you're more than welcome. I mean, I would just, that's just, it's only in my opinion.
So.
There's three other ones here.
So just the, just. To be specific here, right now the agenda item is six F, right? So my understanding is Mr. Cooper was speaking on six F, okay?
So it would have to be on six F.
When you, that's, that's right. So if you're going to open up public comment for the next item, arguably, you'd be able to speak again, just like everyone else on the next item. So right now you're not considering both items at once, you're just considering the one.
Just one item.
So I think that's the question is, do you wanna open up for a public comment for six F?
That's okay. I will speak, I'd like to ask everyone who's in favor of our commission making of Arbenoff and Cantrell standing up right now.
At this time pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, section five-five-one. Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 of the Godly City Council. The Godly City Council will convene into executive session to discuss these matters unless the employee, this item discusses, wish to hold this item in open forum. This will be for item F and G.
What would you like?
I think the question is for this item, you, you called the one item, right?
Both of them.
Oh, F and G? Okay, so you're asking, do they wanna have it in public or in closed session? I think it's for them.
Arvynoff? So they both said in closed session?
What now, public or private?
No, they both want.
It is 2036-2036. We will now close the open forum, go into executive session. Just for these two items.
Godly City Council adjourned its executive session at twenty-one twenty-one and reconvened an open session at twenty-one twenty-seven. Item F, discussion and possible action on the confirmation of Jeremy Arbarnott as a godly police officer.
I'd like to make a motion to confirm Jeremy Arbarnott as a godly police officer.
I'll second that. I got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I have knowledge of Chief Cantrell's area of communications between Sergeant Arbarnott and the previous city council member, so I'm going to abstain from this vote. Concerning him.
Well, I'm always your...I'm sorry, did I get there?
Oh, because of communications between Sergeant Arbarnott and the previous city council member.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not for anything.
I got you.
Scott, will you turn on your microphone?
I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Abstain?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain.
Yes. Motion carries two abstentions and two for...Item F, or sorry, item G, discussion and possible action on the confirmation of godly...
Thanks, Jeremy.
...of godly police chief Matthew Cantrell.
I make a motion to accept Matthew Cantrell in godly police department.
Before you do that, I'm going to object to this one on the basis of...
Scott.
Yes.
She's got a motion on the floor, if you want to discuss it, second it.
Is there a second?
I got a motion, I'll second it. Further discussion?
Okay, I'm just, I'm going to make an argument and you guys can decide what you think about it. Thirty-six oh-three, our godly ordinance says the city marshal and other members of the police department shall be appointed by the mayor, by and with the advice and consent of the city council, and shall serve at the pleasure of the city council. As we all know, the previous law firm, Wyatt Hamilton and Finlay, was very adamant about the former mayor being the quote-unquote CEO of the city, the king, and whatever he wanted to do, he could do. And so, naturally followed their advice, and I think that's how he hired Chief Cantrell. Is it true, Roger and Michael, that there was advice and consent of the city council with Chief Cantrell or no?
I don't remember any.
I think it was basically just told that he was made chief. I have to refer back to the minutes.
That was my, is that the way I remember it? This is what I've done. Did you bring it to us? No, don't have to.
Okay. And let me also preface this. When I get up in the morning, about two minutes after I get up, I've already made my first mistake and it goes downhill from there. So, the...the point of this is just to clean up what, is to clean up the procedure. So, here's my idea. And you can confirm or not, we...we clean this up by allowing chief, or the chief to return to an interim chief, and then we do the search for a permanent chief again, and you could obviously resubmit your resume, and we do it the right way, the way it should have been done the first time. No one else, as far as I know, was considered for the chief's position. And so, that just kind of cleans up the whole, the process that I object to, and it's only the process. It has nothing to do with you, it has nothing to do with anything other than the process. And I've been a procedure guy for the most part. So, I don't think, this, the way this is worded, it says discussion and possible action on the confirmation of godly police chief Matthew Cantrell. If we didn't confirm him, he's not fired. Why would he be fired? From chief, there's, there's officer. He would stay at the same pay. You didn't get a raise when you got...you did get a raise? Okay. Well, I wouldn't want to take your pay. So, leave him at the same. He's interim chief. We go through the process again and do it the right way. That's an argument?
And it's my opinion that, I understand what you're saying, that he should not suffer the sins of the father.
The father, I get you. I understand that, and that is an unfortunate thing about this.
It is, so he should not be punished for something you're saying someone else did. We have to be able to divide that in order for us to move forward. There has to be healing, and we have to place responsibility on those that did not do the procedure correctly, not the people that were the aftermath of it.
True, but other people see it differently, and I think part of healing on both sides is to negotiate and offer solutions on both sides. So, it's not the best, it's not my first choice, but I'm going to bring it up.
So, and so what you're asking is because of someone else doing something incorrect...
We broke the law.
Okay, so then that needs to be left again separately for the law to handle? Why should he be demoted and taken out of his position? He's been here ten years. Why, on that, on what you're saying, on that count? Why should he be demoted because of a mistake that someone else made?
So, the procedure is done correctly, and any kind of objection on that basis is gone.
Well, then again, the blame needs to go to the person that did the wrong procedure.
The blame goes there. I totally blame former Mayor McGee.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't think that whether it's Mr. Cantrell or whether it's another officer, they should not, again, suffer the sins of the father.
I understand.
So, I understand what you're saying, perception, but when you're talking about someone's career, you're talking about demoting, you're talking about taking someone out of a position that they've been in for that specific reason, to me, it's not justifiable, because, again, that should be, again, on the person or people that did that to him, not to him.
I understand that. I disagree. I think that we should clean it up, and it doesn't presuppose that he won't get the job.
And it can be cleaned up by this council confirming and saying that we are unanimous, and that we say, hey, you belong there. And that, that to me is so different than demoting him and rehiring.
Except for the fact that no one else has been considered, and that's one of the problems that we're facing in another area right now, is people think that no one else has been considered for the city administrator position.
Yeah.
And so, people are upset about that, so let's be consistent instead of...
Mr. Cantrell, how long have you been chief?
Almost six months.
Six months. Has any time during that six months when this happened, was it brought up to your attention that this was done incorrectly, by staff or by citizens?
I did it from there on executive session, I did it two different times, I did it right off there as an executive. So, the interim city attorney, the mayor, has told me that the mayor has the right to appoint a full-time police chief. I even asked the interim city attorney to go forward if that is true, provided that the spot shoots on the yes.
Counsel, I turn that question to you. Is it legal for the CEO, city minister, to, or administrator, to appoint a police chief without the council's full approval, and then he is to be confirmed by the council?
Yeah, so your ordinance requires consent by the council.
Consent by the council.
And I don't, I don't know all the previous conversations. Yes, the mayor needs to appoint, or in this case, you know, Mayor Protem, whoever it is. I guess he's already been appointed by the mayor, but there's been no consent by the council, on the record, right? That's what I'm hearing tonight. No one's ever consented.
Is that the case, Mayor Protem?
Yes, it's never officially been entered in any minutes.
So, yes, I... Officially entered in minutes?
What do you say you heard saying?
Uh, because of communications between Sargent and Harrow. It's not previously confirmed on the inside.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not for anything.
I got, I got you.
Scott, will you turn on your microphone?
I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Abstain.
Yes.
I'm going to abstain.
Yes. Motion carries two abstentions and two for... Item F, or sorry, item G, discussion and possible action on the confirmation of Godly... Of Godly Police Chief Matthew Cantrell.
I make a motion to accept Matthew Cantrell, Godly Police Department.
Before you do that, I'm going to object to this one on the basis of...
Scott. Scott.
Yes.
She's got a motion on the floor if you want to discuss it, second it.
Is there a second?
I got a motion, I'll second it. Further discussion?
Okay, I'm just, I'm going to make an argument and you guys can decide what you think about it. Thirty-six oh three, our Godly ordinance says the city marshal and other members of the police department shall be appointed by the mayor, by and with the advice and consent of the city council, and shall serve at the pleasure of the city council. As we all know, um, the previous law firm, Wyatt Hamilton and Finlay, was very adamant about the former mayor being the quote-unquote CEO of the city. The king, and whatever he wanted to do, he could do. And so, naturally followed their advice, and I think that's how he hired Chief Cantrell. Is it true, Roger and Michael, that there was advice and consent of the city council with, with Chief Cantrell or no?
I don't remember any.
I think it was basically just told that he was made chief. I have to refer back to the minutes.
That was my, is that the way I remember it? This is what I've done. Did you bring it to us? No, don't have to.
Okay. And let me also preface this. When I get up in the morning, about two minutes after I get up, I've already made my first mistake and it goes downhill from there. So, the... The point of this is just to clean up what, is to clean up the procedure. So, here's my idea. And you can confirm or not, we... We clean this up by allowing Chief, uh, the Chief to return to an interim chief. And then we do the, um, search for a permanent chief again. And you could obviously resubmit your, your resume. And we do it the right way, the way it should have been done the first time. No one else, as far as I know, was considered for the chief's position. And so, that just kind of cleans up the whole, uh, the process that I object to, and it's only the process. It has nothing to do with you, has nothing to do with anything other than the process. And I've been a pro procedure guy for the most part. So, I don't think, uh, this, the way this is worded, it says discussion and possible action on the confirmation of Godly Police Chief Matthew Cantrell. If we didn't confirm him, he's not fired. Why would he be fired? From chief, there's, there's officer. He would stay at the same pay. You didn't get a raise when you got... You did get a raise? Okay. Well, I wouldn't want to take your pay. So, leave him at the same. He's interim chief. We go through the process again and do it the right way. That's an argument.
And it's my opinion that I understand what you're saying, that he should not suffer the sins of the Father.
The Father, I get you. I understand that, and that is an unfortunate thing about this.
It is, so he should not be punished for something you're saying someone else did. We have to be able to divide that in order for us to move forward. There has to be healing, and we have to place responsibility on those that did not do the procedure correctly, not the people that were the aftermath of it.
True, but, um, other people see it differently. And I think part of healing on both sides is to negotiate and offer solutions on both sides. So, it's not the best, it's not my first choice, but I'm going to bring it up.
So, yeah, and so what you're asking is because of someone else doing something incorrect...
We broke the law.
Okay, so then that needs to be left again separately for the law to handle? Why should he be demoted and taken out of his position? He's been here ten years. Why, on that, on what you're saying, on that count? Why should he be demoted because of the mistake that someone else made?
So, the procedure is done correctly, and that any kind of, um, objection on that basis is gone.
Well, then again, the blame needs to go to the person that did the wrong procedure.
The blame goes there. I totally blame former Mayor McGee.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't think that whether it's Mr. Cantrell or whether it's another officer, they should not, again, suffer the sins of the Father.
I understand.
So, I understand what you're saying, perception, but when you're talking about someone's career, you're talking about demoting, you're talking about taking someone out of a position that they've been in for that specific reason, to me, it's not justifiable. Because, again, that should be, again, on the person or people that did that to him, not to him.
I understand that. I disagree. I think that we should clean it up. And it doesn't presuppose that he won't get the job.
And it can be cleaned up by this council confirming and saying that we are unanimous and that we say, hey, you belong there. And that, that to me is so different than demoting him and rehiring.
Except for the fact that no one else has been considered. And that's one of the problems that we're facing in another area right now, is people think that no one else has been considered for the city administrator position. And so, people are upset about that. So, let's be consistent instead of...
Mr. Cantrell, how long have you been chief?
Almost six months.
Six months. Has any time during that six months when this happened, was it brought up to your attention that this was done incorrectly? By staff or by citizens?
I did it from there on executive session, I did it two different times. Don't lie, sir. I did it right off there as an executive. So, the interim city attorney, since the mayor has told me that the mayor has the right to appoint a full-time police chief. I even asked this interim city attorney before court if that is true, provided that the spot shoots on the yes.
Counsel, I turn that question to you. Is it legal for the CEO, city minister to, or administrator, to appoint a police chief without the council's full approval, and then he is to be confirmed by the council?
Yeah, so your ordinance requires consent by the council.
Consent by the council.
And I don't, I don't know all the previous conversations. Yes, the mayor needs to appoint, or in this case, you know, Mayor Pro Tem, whoever it is. I guess he's already been appointed by the mayor, but there's been no consent by the council. On the record, right? That's what I'm hearing tonight. No one's ever consented.
Is that the case? Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, it's never officially been entered in any minutes.
So, yes, I...
Officially entered in minutes.
His appointment.
So, i-if you're asking, does the council need to do something, I would say yes.
So, are you saying that we need to confirm him, or we need to, um, accept that he's the chief? Which procedure is the proper?
Yeah, um, I mean, I understand what, uh, Councilmember Yarborough was saying about the language of the agenda item. I think that, given the passage of time, you, you have an appointment. Your confirmation would be consent. If that's what the council chose to do tonight.
Which I've already made at the motion, and so I've been seconded, so...
I have a few questions I'd like to go into executive session to ask. If that's okay with you all.
What is, what is the exception?
Personnel matters, oh seven four.
On the same item?
Yes.
Aren't we just sent there for that?
I mean, it's up to you if you want to call it again.
The Godley City Council adjourned its executive session at 22:05 and reconvened into open session at 22:07. Item G, discussion of possible action on the confirmation of Godley Police Chief Matthew Cantrell.
I'm making motion to confirm Matthew Cantrell as Godley Police Chief.
So we have a suspended motion on the floor. Are we not bringing that back or?
I'm sorry. Yes. I make a motion to bring back the suspended motion.
I have a motion to bring back the suspended motion. A second by Roger. I got a motion on the floor to approve the confirmation of Godley Police Chief Matthew Cantrell. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
It's Dame.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Lunch next week.
Item H, discussion of possible action on holding an informal town hall meeting inviting the citizenry to voice their opinion on the hiring of Michael Papenfuss as permanent city administrator for the city of Godley. The town hall is to be held at Godley City Hall on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023 at 18:30. Meeting will continue until all citizens in attendance who desire to have their voices heard have done so or 2200, whichever comes first. At the conclusion of the meeting, the city council will retire to executive session to make a final decision.
All right, so this one's mine. What my vision here is, is for the people of the city. There's obviously a rift with regard to the hiring of Michael Papenfuss as city administrator. And so, the idea is for those who wish to have their voices heard, for them to come and have and ask questions. There's a lot of questions as to, you know, what have you done with the other resumes? How many others have you considered, et cetera, et cetera? And all of those things, I think, deserve an answer and ought to be heard, ought to have questions. And this is one where it's not just the five-minute session. This is where people can come in and we will be on the hot seat to answer those questions. As, and to make people feel as comfortable as they're going to feel. You know, people are not going to be happy either way it goes. So that's my idea. I don't know about the whole final decision at the end of that. That probably was a little presumptuous. But nevertheless, that's the idea that I'm having and that's what I hope my colleagues will approve tonight. Again, it's all informal, so you got a question for Misty? You got a question for me, Roger, Michael, whatever? You'll have the opportunity to ask that direct question and get a direct answer, as direct as we can give it, within legal bounds.
I don't have a problem having a meeting. I thought we were going to set up a town hall tonight.
Unless with this is for.
I would like to make a motion here. I'd like to make a motion to remove items 6H and 6T from the agenda and deal with this on the same basis as we would deal with any other employee or application. The process should not be singled out and be treated any differently than reviewing other applicants. And all of them should be set to the same standard, the same qualifications, the same everything. Doing it this way, we are giving more attention to one resume, one specific candidate that I do not believe that that should be segregated from the other applications. That if we're going to review them, they should all be reviewed in the same aspect. So my motion is to remove 6H and 6T from the agenda.
So you would have to postpone either to a further date or indefinitely? And you can only do one item that we're discussing. If you want to do that to item T, whenever we get there, it'll have to be done then.
Okay, so you're saying that I would have to just postpone it indefinitely? I can't.
You can postpone indefinitely, which means it won't get brought back up. You can postpone to a further date and you have to give an exact date.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone 6H indefinitely.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? No second. Motion dies for lack of a second.
I just, myself, I just didn't take, get this over with. I just, I'd go to 6T and either vote for, vote for accept or, or not. We've been through this for, I'm just gonna be, I need, we need a city administrator.
This is not the regular applicant, though. This applicant is different and that's why his resume is being handled, would be, given that this passes differently. I think that it's a hot point for the city and for the citizens of the city. And they deserve to hear why this is being done. I mean, I think it's, I didn't, I def, I deliberately avoided this entire weekend looking at anything on social media. And I'm going to refuse to do that going forward. So don't expect to hear anything from me on Facebook about this or about much of anything else, to be frank. But this is, we knew this was going to happen. We knew that there, I know there's a blow-up, in other words. I knew that, that much, because people are calling me, people are texting me, people are emailing me. So this is not the regular applicant. It's not the guy that's never been here before, the guy from Utah, or the guy from New Mexico, or the guy from Joshua. And those aren't real people. They're just examples. It's, it's Michael Papenfuss and that means there's it's, it's, it just is how it is, which is a hot point. And the people who object and the people who support should have the opportunity to come and say and to, to give the input to the city council before the decision is made. In my view. You can vote me down?
Let's do this next Tuesday. Make a motion to do 6H next Tuesday. Have our meeting.
Second.
I have a, you're postponing it till next Tuesday? Or you're making a motion to have a?
To do this, to do it.
Okay.
Have a city hall meeting, have a town hall meeting.
So I have a motion to have a town hall informal meeting on September 12th at 18:30. Is that your motion?
Yep.
Someone second it?
Scott here.
Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
I do actually, no, hang on just a second. I do have, because the council doesn't even get a chance to have say or to vote on this before we're going to waste possible waste time for the citizens, go through the motions. Do we not trust our council to make this decision?
I don't know what you mean, because 6T's still up. You could, you could make the, this, you could make this null and void tonight.
So if we schedule this town hall meeting and then we get to 6T and hypothetically it works in one way or the other, can we go? can we go back and cancel six H? If we, it's not needed? Yeah.
I think what you're asking is you want to do six T tonight, so that Michael's hired tonight.
That's not your assumptions.
I'm sorry, don't, don't get angry. I'm looking at six T, which is to approve. No, it says to approve it. Accept an employment contract on sixty, so that presupposes he's hired tonight.
No, because if we vote no, then that's not the case.
No, but what you're, okay, well, you, I'm sorry, I'm putting words in there.
No, but you see what I'm saying?
You mean on sixty or six eight, on sixty? Yeah, the final sentence? Well, whoever makes that motion, did you already make, I already made the, what was the motion? Maybe we need to rescind it and I'll take that part out.
So, the motion is to have a town hall informal meeting on September 12th at eighteen thirty.
All right, well, let me, then, do we have to follow the item exactly as worded if that's the motion?
No.
I should have been a lawyer. So, I need to rescind the original one.
Is there a motion for it?
Yes, the motion's to have a town hall informal meeting on September 12th at eighteen thirty. It doesn't include any of that. No, not till we get there.
Did you say September 12th?
Yes, September 12th.
Yeah, all you need is amend your motion to strike the last.
Okay. Motion to amend my motion?
You're making a motion to amend your motion. How would you like to amend it?
I would like to amend it to strike the last sentence at the conclusion of the meeting. City council will retire to executive session to make a final decision.
So, I have a motion to amend the motion to strike the last sentence of verbiage in item H. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
I will abstain. Motion passes to amend the motion. So, we have a motion on the floor to have a town hall informal meeting on September 12th at eighteen thirty striking the last sentence of verbiage in item H. Any further discussion?
Sure.
No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
I'm going to vote no. So, motion failed.
Okay.
Anybody like to make another motion?
Another motion to what? Motion the same thing again and have it fail?
I mean, that's the
That's the idea.
process that we have to go through.
No, if you guys don't want to do it, you don't want to do it. I made my case.
It failed.
Yeah, but we're still on item H. We can either take no action, we can postpone it, we can do another.
Your motion, we take no action?
I have a motion by Roger to take no action. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
No.
Yes, no, take, yes to not taking no action. You're right. You're asking not to take action. Yay.
Take no action.
Yeah, take no action.
Yes, motion passes three one. Item I, discussion and possible action on approving the proposal from Walker for electronic locks, the access control system for the city of Godly buildings. I make a motion to postpone this till September 12th due to
Second.
Due to what?
Due to a family emergency. I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Discussion and possible action on approving the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three audit report as presented by Merritt, McLean, and Hamby, PC at the August fifteenth city council meeting.
Motion to approve item six J as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
There's another one coming out? Another audit? Or is this the final audit?
This is the audit.
The audit.
It's the
My question is, last meeting, we had money going different places. Is, is that what we talked about last meeting? Addressed in this, in this?
No, this would have been fiscal year twenty-two.
Okay.
So, anything discrepancies that we found this year because of prior staff will be in this next audit, however I get him all that information.
Mike, do you need to go?
What?
Are you, you need to go?
Oh, I'm good. The green folder is what they presented to me about a week ago. We finally got the final copies in. If y'all want to go over it, we can, but they pretty much went over it last meeting.
Personally, I'm not interested in going over it. I went and read much of it already.
I will say this has to be approved before budget adoption, so.
I'll approve it.
Any other discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item K, discussion and possible action on appointing members to the city of Godly Holiday and Events Committee.
Grace White for me. I'll get your, her contact info. I'll email it to you.
I don't have anyone.
Roger, I bet you could holler at some of the ladies at the Lions Club? Me to holler at them and see if they'd be interested in?
Yeah, I just, I more or less have a vacation for the last few days.
Oh, so you already have somebody in mind?
I did, yeah.
So, let the record reflect that Ms. Rodriguez left the room to go to the office to get a piece of paper at twenty-two, twenty-eight. We still have a quorum, so we can still discuss.
If someone's interested in it out here or on, send me a email. I do not know my city council e, e address, address, but leave a message and I'll be fine if somebody entertains wanting to be on it. But I don't have anybody in particular.
That's Roger dot Cornelison at godlytx.gov.
C O R N E L I S O N. It's not spelled as it's pronounced.
Twenty-two, twenty-nine, Ms. Rodriguez returns.
For, for my picks is Eliza Duncan and Sky Hamilton. I do also have six other recommendations that emailed me would like, if needed, to be on the committee. So, I do have all of those here.
What's here on?
Marta Olivera, Carrie Lipscomb, Vanessa Martinez, Terry Goodlow, Tara Roden, Stephanie Hodges, Cara Bishop, Peggy Villa Gomez. All of these also would like to either be on the committee or be volunteers with, to help the committee.
My two picks are Marta and Stephanie.
Marta Olivera?
Yes.
And Stephanie?
Stephanie Hodges. Don't do me wrong, I want big things for Christmas.
Roger?
I don't have anyone.
You want to?
I asked them to, I wish I'd done that before, but if anybody was interested to email me and if people that you've got will email me, that'll be fine with me.
Okay, I mean, I have these if you want.
I know, but I asked people to email me, so if we can't say, forget, you know, just.
Oh, no, yeah, I got you.
If no one does, I'll holler at you.
So, are we postponing this until the twelfth?
Just put a plus two and move on.
Well, I can't do that. I have to write it into the
How many are we doing? Did you decide that we were going?
We didn't decide last meeting. I would say at least, we have one, two, three, four, five right now. I'd say at least five or seven. That way, at least the committee members will be there to help.
Well, we could just put them all on the committee. More than merry.
So, I say we do Peggy Villa Gomez, Bishop, Cara Bishop, and Terry Goodlow as well.
Could you give me those again, please?
Peggy Villa Gomez, Cara Bishop, and Terry Goodlow.
How many, how many does that leave in that group that's not on the committee then?
Three. So, that puts eight people on the committee, potentially. I wouldn't say make the committee much more than that. I mean, the others can volunteer.
Will this be a voting committee? If it is, probably don't do odd number, depending, unless there's a, a head that doesn't get the vote.
More of an advisory to the council.
More planners.
Is there's one of the other threes you want to put on there to make it nine or take one off? Make it seven?
I think it's fine.
And we can always change these.
Well, if we, if we're voting them in, it's got to be put into ordinance, right? So, it's going to be kind of
We just amend the ordinance. We write an ordinance to amend the ordinance.
Right.
We'll add a motion to amend the motion.
So, I make a motion to accept Grace White, Eliza Duncan, Sky Hamilton, Marta Olivera, Stephanie Hodges, Peggy Villa, 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 I didn't have all of them.
Villa Gomez.
Villa Gomez, Cara Bishop, and Terry Goodlow on the Holiday Events Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Grace White, Eliza Duncan, Sky Hamilton, Marta Olivera, Stephanie Hodges, Peggy Villa Gomez, Cara Bishop, and Terry Goodlow to the City of Godly Holiday and Events Committee. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, lady.
Item L, discussion and possible action on approving the revised preliminary plat for Fox Hollow subdivision.
Scribner errors, and your engineer recommends approval of the revised preliminary plat. Have you any questions for me?
What are the lot sizes?
Uh, Fox Hollow, fifty-five by one-twenty, aren't they? Thank you.
Fifty-five by one-twenty?
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed most of them were in the six thousand square foot range.
Yes, sir, that would be correct.
Why aren't they in the seventy-five hundred foot square, foot, square foot range?
Well, this is because we passed a preliminary plat sometime back. This is just the revising of that plat. This is just to correct errors that were made on the plat in lettering and, and words. Scribner errors.
And does, this meets our minimum lot size? Or this is in the ETJ, isn't it?
It's in the ETJ today, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The property to the north of it, to the east of it, and to the west of it are all in city limits.
So this doesn't have to meet our minimum lot size?
No, ma'am, it does not.
Does it have to meet the minimum road frontage?
No, sir, it does not.
Was the county's road frontage, it would, would, what would it be?
My good plans are going to be, if you're trying to be consulting, I'm here with something to develop. Um, the county for the one acre lots, their minimum lot size, they're going to be one acre lots to get, uh, the center situation. So therefore, um, their lot sizes are a hundred fifty feet as a minimum.
All this is gonna tie to the city sewer system?
Yes. But I would also say too, the plan, the engineer, um, a director has been working on the plans for about a year. And it's gone through several reviews, years on time. So it's been that long that, you know, the plan's been getting reviewed.
Are they wanting to annex into the city, do you know, or, or extend the ETJ?
I would imagine they're land access.
And all of that would be City of Godly water?
No.
No, it's Johnson County, it's Johnson County water.
Y'all know where this is.
Oh, our sewer, okay.
Nine oh seven?
So it's on nine oh seven, but it, where Godly Lake is, on Hadley?
On the drawing that you're looking at, Hadley Farms is directly to the right. Okay. Across the street.
And how many lots are in there? I'm just curious.
Can you scroll down and to the right a little bit? It should have a number there.
Up west.
Sorry, it's really tiny on our paper. I can't see it.
Three hundred, single-family lots.
How many, sorry?
Three hundred and fifty-five by one-twenty.
Starting next council meeting, you'll each have a laptop, so you'll be able to get these digitally without a magnifying glass.
So tiny.
Let me remind you, the purpose of this plat being resubmitted to us is just to correct. Mistakes that were made on the plat in spelling and in some number callouts, just to correct it.
So I'm not gonna lie, I had no idea what scrivener was, so I had to look it up. I guess you've never used that term in here before, so what word?
I'm sorry. It's because the surveyor that drew it up made mistakes in spelling and in numbers, and it's been corrected.
So I was looking, after looking up the meaning of that word, um, I was looking at different cities ordinances and they say that, and ours doesn't say it, so, I mean, doesn't really apply, but what word, they require that you list what those scrivener errors were. What word they exactly need?
Yes, sir, we, we don't do that.
But it was just errors and spelling and?
Yes, sir.
I think you'll find that that probably applies more to documents they've been recording versus documents that are currently made.
They came back on this because the engineering firm that's doing the work, two years ago, we first saw the preliminary plat. And maybe it's been, what's the correct term? Little, little farting around and haven't gotten everything done. And so they've come back, Mr. Dutton, his office found mistakes in this, so he had them corrected by this, by the surveying company.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised preliminary plat with the corrections to the scrivener error.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I don't believe we, I don't believe we should have any lots coming here listing our city's lot, listing our city's size. It shouldn't ever be approved when these lots smaller than that. They should never come to us.
Well.
We need to make sure people know lots and bring them to us.
It's in RETJ.
Yeah.
We cannot determine what size lots get in RETJ.
Okay, we need to go to county, let the county take care of that ETJ. But I don't want any small, tiny, I don't, you know, we've got a whole lot extra, if we'd gone to the size of the city lots, we would not have so many houses, have a little bit better quality of life for the people, not be burdening our schools. So that's my discussion.
Did you say this meets the requirements of the county?
It does not.
No, the county requires two acre lots.
About one acre, if it's got both lots.
Yes.
So that it, it can be on.
So then what, it's our platting and subdivision rules that are governing it.
It's our ETJ, they have to come to us, by rule of law, they have to come to us for us to approve their plat. However, they're not required to meet our standards while they're building.
But they have to meet the county's at one acre?
No, they, they can, pretty much, they can do whatever they want in the county.
I thought you just said there was.
We've had that discussion numerous times in here.
Well, we're about to have it again.
I think, I can hear that.
So.
So because the city ETJ, we have to follow city's ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. But as far as lot size, lot size cannot be specified in the ETJ, because it's not known in the ETJ. And that's a station that's in the city and they, under horror of sort of, you know, it's a right-of-way, the streets have to be planned according to a city street. And in this particular subdivision, instead of being asphalt blockage, it'll actually be concrete streets covered by it. Which I think you'll find is a lot better for everybody.
Yeah, I think, I think the question, just we were curious, is if we're not regulating lot sizes and the county requires a minimum of an acre, how did they get smaller lots?
It's not in the ca, it's not in the county's jurisdiction. Anything with, and counsel can advise you, he could probably quote Scrivener's correction to us about where it says, but the bottom.
We have a, we have a little agreement with the county, so we've got jurisdiction in the ETJ as far as subdivision ordinance. But like you're saying, there's no, I mean, so that's how you have more lots. The, um, this, this is just a, I guess it's a revised preliminary plat, but really it's just boost the signature out.
Yeah.
I mean, this is already approved, you're just approving, just clarifying the record because it's true.
And I get that, I'm just trying to get clarification for further moving forward. If, so, so what you're saying is if it's not in the city, we can't regulate it. If it's not in the county, they can't regulate it, so as long as you're not ETJ, willy-nilly, you can do what you want.
So you, so we have an agreement with the county in the ETJ. And in that agreement, we, city control, subdivision ordinance control. However, there's only, you're not, you're not in the city.
So nobody regulates the lot sizes?
So that's supposed to be here now, so the county has different regulations for lot sizes, and you have the city limits, and the ETJ is.
Where it does afford the city control is over a street layout, and making sure the circulation habits are met, and that the streets are built in the same. Which again, I think a lot more is taken than what you get in the county. Which only the county can say, and that's all right, it's much better than a concrete street.
It's 'cause they can repair it.
Do what?
They said in, in the meeting here one day, it's because they can repair it, they can't repair concrete roads.
Well, they can, maybe she's not probably equipped to do it.
Yeah?
But then you don't have to do that, because what you're going to do is actually do the concrete street now. Whereas that's why they're on purpose, they do that three minutes.
Is that a, a center strip in there, is that a floodplain?
Yes.
What are y'all gonna do with it?
Uh, can you partially use it to attention on, uh?
A detention pond in open space.
So no parks, nothing for the residents, you give them small houses, no place to play?
Well, the open space will be parked, it's just not.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a mosquito swamp, have a. I know what it is, I mean, I, I would do. I probably voted against it when it came up, and I'll vote against it again.
So outside of all that, um, and I was wondering why Jennifer replied to this today, whenever, I didn't print it off till this afternoon. She said, thank you, this looks to all be located within the city limits, Johnson County has no comment. Y'all asked me to include those, I included them.
In the city?
Yeah, so it shows on the GIS map that it is in the city limits.
Really? Nice.
So I don't know if it was improperly submitted to county, or, I think we should probably do a little more research before we decide on this.
Amen. Have you got the map pulled up right now?
Yes. There's the properties.
Sure enough, that's it.
It's this property right here.
That's it, yes, sir.
It's the City of Godly for the nearest state city.
But again, we harken back to the.
What's it, land access with the preliminary?
I see.
I don't know. That's a different developer.
So, me personally, I'd like to hear back from Jennifer and find that ordinance saying that it did or did not, submitted to county, saying that's in the city limits, or his annex.
If that's the case, then lot sizes don't meet our minimum requirement.
Well, yeah, but the preliminary plat was approved already, was submitted to the city and approved already, so. And that's where you want to develop a previous developer, not follow any engineering plan.
But was it presented under false pretenses if it was in the, in the city and we were told it's not? So should that, is that a technicality to unapprove a preliminary plat if we were told that it's not in the city limits and it really is?
Well, what did you say about two years ago? I have no idea.
Well, if you go back to the, go back to the plat, it's, uh. Cause I'm pretty sure it says it on the tile block, that's in addition to the city of Godly. I guess, uh, I'm pretty sure it's them saying to the ETJ.
But Glenn, didn't you just say it's in the ETJ?
I thought, I looked at the same map that Michael just called up, and I thought it was in the ETJ.
With the one Michael just pulled up is in the city.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, missed if I may, I looked at this plat two or three years ago.
Yeah.
They sent it to me because there were scrivener marks, clerical errors, if you will. It's already, we've already approved it in the city. Approving scrivener errors, that's something I don't spend a lot of time going over. So if they make, if they make mistakes on it, it's not on the city, it's on the person.
The way the process usually works with a developer, and I'm pretty certain they probably do the same thing with this one too, is they, after a preliminary plat approved, then it goes to the engineering process where things are designed to pay for, or had the design good. Except for on a developer's standpoint, not only is he invested money in the land, but he's invested obviously a fair chunk of change with the engineering fees that he's already paid, and that's all predicated off of, with this plat approved, only that plat was approved.
And I understand what you're saying, but, and I.
Just to point it clear, what do you, what do you think has been, I guess, what concerned for me was that you thought that there was a, I guess it was submitted to the county or somewhere along those lines, and where'd that idea come in?
Well, he was saying that it was ETJ. I was looking at a map that said city, so.
Well, I can tell you now, I mean, that's, you know, obviously it said City of Godly on there, and I think, you know, for whatever reason.
So does it meet our minimum lot size?
No.
So how did it get approved?
So there.
By council vote.
By council vote, yeah.
But it didn't meet our ordinances? Dean?
Yeah, looking at your ordinance, it's now, um, I would say this has been a lot of movement in the law on plat issues. Going last two legislative seasons, we're looking at a plat that's been approved, all they're giving is a fair chunk of change, and.
Yeah, because we gotta take that on.
Yes, by a, sure.
So when it comes back to the final plat, are you gonna have a chance to make objections based on the ordinance, or do you need the ordinance for funds?
Well, the problem with that is that by the time that it's, uh, plat, all the concrete on the land, nobody, you know, they'll be, uh, pull up on like, investing in projects for the lot sizes, you can't issue them. But I would say with the city also, I would wish the, uh, council approved maybe lot sizes that aren't necessarily, um, per the ordinance.
Not this council?
Not this council, and that is why, that again, they're approved and built.
Do any of your plans go, go before the final plat? Before final class, create one construction, it's supposed to be.
Did they, when they submitted the original, did they apply for, uh, for some word, toll, when you?
A variance.
A variance, because this would have to have a variance on it, so they didn't apply for a variance and it's sold it out anyway.
When I did the cottages, which is over by Spring, Spring, or Spring Market, or whatever it's called, the, there was no variance applied there, but that's why I probably.
Well, there should have been.
Agree, I mean, there's.
Those houses are way too small.
Those, yeah, and the lot sizes too, so that's what we.
I, I think we're just talking about a little what ifs.
Yep.
Why don't we get all the information and bring it back at the next meeting?
Okay.
Cause otherwise, we're gonna what if this all night.
Okay.
Make motion to, uh, for no action on item six.
We already have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yeah, we can ask the question real quick.
What are you trying to get to?
I just need to go find the ordinances and there should be a plat map back there from two years ago. So then we can compare it, it says City of Godly, it's City of Godly.
Okay, so you're looking for the annotation on it. Where I'm definitely worried off, to be really candid, is the annotation on that that we just went through on the corner sign. That I'm not sure if it's been recorded yet, and it was for this council two or three months ago.
It's, it's been presented to them.
Okay, but has it been recorded yet?
That's, as for, uh, recorded on our end?
And the corner sign is, I tell you, first of all, common, but if they're not on the corner sign, it's not an extension, it's a extension of the.
Okay, but that went to, that that ordinance, that ordinance got approved, the annexing to the ETJ, and that happened last December.
Okay, but there's no, there's no annexation in the ETJ, is it a extension?
The, the, the concern is, was paperwork ever filed?
Paperwork?
Not on corner sign, on this project.
I'm sorry about that.
We don't know what paperwork.
Oh, you're wondering if the.
Yes. Has this ever been?
I'm not.
We'll, we'll know September twelfth whenever I, we bring it back and I look for it.
Is there a position to, oh, this is actually handed, but.
Well, we assume.
Well, you guys, is that now, or is it handed?
I don't, I don't know, that's what I gotta look for.
It was before.
If you, if you back up the logic a little bit, so you pulled that up on the Johnson County GIS map, right? Okay, I can assure you, if it wanted to see, and it looked at, over the ordinance or whatever a lot number required, it would not show up on that map, because they're so particular about, and what shows up on the map.
Keep, keep in there.
Yeah, their records are pretty good.
Yeah.
Well, their records are good, but ours aren't. So it's already, actually, the next agenda item, we have to talk about it, where we sent in records saying that, oh, yeah, no plat required, and all of a sudden, there's a plat required.
Is there, is there a shot clock on a revised preliminary?
Yeah, so, that, this, I have kind of a little bit of concern that there, that the ordinance shot clock, I don't know that we're, uh, concerned, but the, the decisions are. Decisions are ordered, I mean, you're just looking at preliminary errors, do you have a list of errors, then?
I do not.
Okay, I mean, we're talking about all the numbers, maybe, just both roads, and so, I don't, I don't...
But if we don't approve it, if we don't approve it...
If we're being applied as a minimal act, then there's much of the, the, the device, and the...
And if we, and if we don't?
I think that you might be preemptive, like, my question before, is, you know, in the last two legislative seasons, is that one made it really business? Is it, or maybe it's...
Well, what's the harm of not approving it tonight and doing it next week, just to, for the research to take place, and just for us to kinda know what happened? It doesn't mean we're not gonna approve it, it just means, we'd like to kinda figure out what happened, maybe streamline the process, or whatever we, we would think.
Yeah, cause they're just wondering how this slipped under three hundred homes and didn't even clearly say City of Godly. There's no variance filed, how did this get slipped into, into the city without meeting our requirement?
Well, we don't know that there wasn't a variance file, there may be, but that's why we need to do research.
I thought, I thought we just had, I thought y'all just had that discussion. Can we get a list of those?
I think that's not the part of ordinance, and if we wanna know that some means extension has been changed, but right now, we don't, we don't know.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve it. Any further discussion?
Yes, can we get, uh, that email to us, like you just said, that all the scribner changes?
I don't have that. I don't have anything for the, for the, other than the document.
So, in order for us to prove these scribner errors, we would need a, we would need to know what they are. Cause like he said, we wouldn't even know the changes, so, once we have those, then we can look at what's changes in it.
I'll, I'll ask the surveyor if he has a list, I mean, typically, you know, they have like a markup, what they give to you, probably a CAD, you know, and when, when you know that's done, and somebody backs up it, and they don't, you know, do they throw the markup away, and it's probably a fair, and, so, it's not, it's not typically something you would keep track of.
Well, it's hoped that they use Blue Beam and they can keep track of all that automatically, and it's simple to use.
Yeah, you use AutoCAD, you know, I mean, you know, you typically wouldn't keep like your original CAD on, and you just have your, your drawing took off and working on it.
Right, but they know the changes they made, but we do not, and you're asking us to prove something blindly, and I'm not, I mean, personally, I'm, you know, yeah, personally, I'm not okay.
Okay, fair enough. I think the thing that gives me heart, though, this is from, this is from a developer perspective, okay, is that probably, I mean, there is no doubt that previous council did things that are maybe undimensional, which is put down, okay, and that you, you know, plat was brought in, that based on negotiations with the previous city administrator, you know, they were, they were approved.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's typical, and it happened, I mean, development is as much a negotiation as, as anything, you know, but then here, developers spend money, time and money in the land, and also with the engineering pieces, et cetera, et cetera, and it's, all of a sudden, the entire project is being called into question based on the lot size that this particular council doesn't care for.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's fair to the developer.
Right, and I understand what you're saying, I do, but you also need to see it from our perspective, that we need to do what's fair for our citizens, and what's fair for our infrastructure, and our ordinances, and all the things that we've put in place for this not to happen in our city limits.
So, we make this decision as a council, so I'm gonna call a vote on this.
What is the motion again?
So, we're still in discussion, you...
We are, but I just use parliamentary procedure to call it on it.
Chair gets to call a vote, yeah.
We've talked about this for a long time now.
What is the motion, sir?
Motion is to approve the revised preliminary plat for Fox Hollow subdivision.
Has that been seconded?
Yes.
I vote aye.
You vote aye to approve it?
Yes.
Misty?
No.
No.
No, motion fails. Make a motion to postpone this till the September twelfth meeting, pending a list of the scribner errors and further research.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously. Discussion of possible action on rejecting the final plat of KMGEP addition.
Have we got that?
Should have a letter in your packet, we've reviewed this final plat, and we find that it is not in conformance with the City of Godly's subdivision ordinance, or the rules for plating and landing the subdivision. Plat was submitted on August fifteenth, this project is within the ETJ of the City of Godly. We are recommending rejection of the plat for six reasons that are listed there in that letter, and, uh, that's all I got, unless y'all have questions.
So, which, which of these six falls under the, um, subdivision ordinance? And not under plating?
No drainage plan was presented. They showed a detention pond on an, on an easement, they showed a detention, no documentation about the detention bond, that's also in our ordinance. An OSF application had not been presented, that means we have no way of knowing what they're doing for sewage treatment. And then, my comments about no documentation has been presented indicating that Tech Dot has approved an entrance, they've shown an entrance off of twenty-three thirty-one, with no knowledge of whether Tech Dot has even approved that. Some of these things are just, uh, less than adequate engineering when it was all submitted. The plat showed two entrances on the, on the, uh, connecting to Coyote Crossing, which is a divided street. It showed one of those entrances that was less than fifty feet off of the Farm to Market Road. Tech Dot would have never approved that, nor will I, that's just a very dangerous situation.
So, whenever I talk to Jennifer, um, Kathleen sent a letter to them on June thirteenth stating this letter is to verify that twelve-five-ninety FM twenty through thirty-one will not require a plat from the City of Godly. The city, or the address may be located within the ETJ of Godly. At first, when we drove by, we had some complaints about the property, went out there and looked at it, and, uh, they've, they've already started building. So, I contacted Jennifer, said, "Hey, they've already started building, but this is what we've gotten, went out there and looked, I just wanted to let you know." So, their building is almost constructed at this point. But... It's... Coyote Crossing was approved behind it, as city limits, this was left in the ETJ for some reason.
Are they getting any permits or getting any, uh, questions?
Because Kathleen sent page ninety-four to the county, so county permitted it as, so, if there's something in the ETJ that is already a part of a plat, or it doesn't need to have a plat, I have to send and sign a piece of paper to the county, to April, and saying, "Hey, this doesn't require a plat, it's already in a, plated subdivision," or whatever the case may be. So, they got a permit from Johnson County, but from the looks of it, they're not doing the same layout for the roadway or the driveway as they put on this plat. Cause the bottom one looks like it terminates into like a little parking lot on the, I guess, west side of the property.
Do you have a drawing that you can pull up?
Yeah.
The grayed area is called a fire lane and access easement. The only way to work that fire lane to go around that area that's titled Lot One, Block One, is for that fire lane to go out to Coyote Crossing. And they're using a, up at the bottom left corner, they show the driveway going out to the Farm to Market Road. Neither of those, to my knowledge, have been approved by Tech Dot. The, out, the U shape at the top of this drawing would appear that there's two roads that are going on out to Coyote Crossing. There's no way to know otherwise based upon what we're saying, seeing. That's a very dangerous intersection, the one on the left of the, of the U shape, is, I believe, that number is, uh... What's that number, forty-five feet? Forty-three feet, I think, forty-three feet from the right of way of, uh, Farm to Market Road, that's two car lengths. If you're coming off of that, uh, turn lane at forty, thirty-five miles an hour, and somebody's sitting there halfway in an inter, halfway in or halfway out, there's an accident, that's, that's not a safe situation. And I would assume by, uh, being a fire lane, that would mean that we're gonna be able to go all the way around. This is a document that, that I had to look at. But, you know, the fact that, uh, Kathleen sent a letter that says that don't need a, a plat, I don't know how that gets handled.
I mean...
I'm sorry?
She was drawing the plat?
So, Kathleen was our old city secretary.
No, she's our city secretary.
Yeah.
She wrote a letter saying no plat was required.
When it was supposed to be required.
Okay, we're, so you, we hear a recommendation of rejection of the plat.
I got the, I got the plat apparently as a courtesy from the, uh, developer.
And the building is already being built without approval of the land being platted because Kathleen sent that, but under our guidelines, our engineers, they're rejecting it, even if it was submitted, cause it's not being, it's not proper.
It's already being developed, though?
Yes, it is. It's one of those, why ask permission if you ask to get it?
You're gonna take the building down? So, does that mean the letter that she's...
The plat's already been approved, or not approved?
Not.
I'm offering, I've suggested that we reject the plat, that's ready.
Yeah.
How long ago is it?
August fifteenth.
I think the dilemma comes that Kathleen told them they didn't even have to have one.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
But at that point, they did not submit the plat?
To what?
Correct.
There's no plat submitted at that point?
That is correct. That is correct, they contacted City Hall and were told by the city secretary that they didn't need a plat.
And then, there's a third one?
Yep.
Now, we're trying to, we're trying to apply to the plat?
Which is being denied, so...
I make a motion to reject the final plat for KMGEP addition.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item N, discussion of possible action on the rejection of the minor plat for Encore Charka subdivision.
This is the, uh, the area that's being built up between Stillwater Lake, Stillwater, yeah, Stillwater Lake and the Wildcat Vista Apartments. Encore came in after, uh, we first saw a plat for Stillwater and for the apartments. Encore came in and went to the developer and said, "We wanna build a substation on this property, and we would like to buy it from you." Further north. There we go, right there. That tract. And so, the developer sold that to Encore, and he had easements that he had already filed with us, going across that tract, and when Encore put together their plat, which, by the way, Encore was out there doing construction, and I called him up, and I says, "Dude, where's your plat?" He said, "We don't have to plat, we're Encore." And I said, "Well, you do have to plat, and I'd appreciate it if you'd stop construction until we get there." I said, "If you wanna move dirt, move dirt, move dirt to your heart's content." Well, they didn't just move dirt, they just kept on going with their construction schedule, I was told on the phone and in an email that Encore's got it scheduled to do their, this and this on this date, and I said, "Well, then I suggest you get me a plat pretty quick." And it took the gentleman about three to six, three to six weeks to get us a plat, after we first had that discussion, and by that time, the road work has been completed, or the, the dirt moving has been completed, road work has been completed in and out. They put a, a culvert pipe under the road connecting to the ten oh one, County Road ten oh one, I don't know what they put in, I haven't looked, I know it has safety end treatments on it and big rock on top. It may be temporary, but one thing I noticed today is, yeah, okay, I asked for y'all to reject the plat based upon the fact that it did not show a twenty-foot ex, two, twenty-foot wide water line easement to get from Johnson County serving Stillwater to Johnson County serving the apartment complex. There was no water line sho, there was no easement shown for the water line, nor was there one shown for the sewer line that goes across there. I went out there today, and that's why I have asked you to re, reject the plat, I went out there today, and I see that they have fenced the entire area and put a gate about thirty feet off of the road, well, about thirty feet off of the road, the first thirty foot of that property should be dedicated to the county for the widening of ten oh one, and then there's a twenty-foot easement behind that, and then there's water and sewer lines that are in there, and there's a manhole sitting there now that's completely fenced off where our guys can't get to it. And Encore has it inside of their fence. And so, I was going to ask them nicely to move their gate back in their property, so that there's room for our crews when they ever need to access the sewer, or access the water lines, I'm sorry, they're not your water lines, just your sewer. If you ever have to access the sewer, I'd like to be able to do it without having to take down Encore's fence. But they have just, uh, they're pretty much thumbing their noses at the City of Godly and decided, "Well, we're Encore, we're gonna build."
So, seven days ago, he provided the, uh, easement information that they requested for the plat for the apartments there, and unless they've emailed you, they haven't emailed me.
I have not seen, I have not received anything. And I thought I'd call Mr. Yankar tomorrow and visit with him about seeing the fence already installed, that they need to move it back off of the city's easements. Right now, they've got a lock gate where we can't even access our easement, and that...
So, fire sewer backup, oh, yeah, we get that manhole, but... So fire sewer backup, oh, would you be able to get that manhole?
Not without opening their gate or cutting down a portion of the fence.
I'd like to make a motion to reject six N on our recommendation from our engineer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item O, discussion and possible action on approving a variance request for five four one McKitcher Court to construct an eight-foot tall cedar privacy fence.
Y'all, I looked at this, this is an interior lot in the subdivision. And this lot backs up on an existing natural drainage channel. I reviewed the city's subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance and the rules for plating and land subdivision to see if we addressed in any of those documents the height of a fence to separate residential property. And I found nothing that says you can't go higher than or you can't go less than. Found nothing in the documents to tell us how tall a fence can be. Based upon not knowing, not finding anything that says we can't, they can't do it, I'm suggesting that we tell Mr. Hudgens that the request for variance is not needed and let him go build his fence.
Is that just for interior line fences or all the way around?
This is all three sides of this lot, I would assume.
Probably wants to put a pool in there or something.
I'm sure.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering, we, I'll just speak personally, we had an eight-foot fence and we had to apply for a variance here in the city and pay and go before the council to get an eight-foot variance fence. And I know I've heard some other people have, so I just wanna wonder why is it not in their ordinance and if I had to do it?
People at City Hall back then may not have liked you when you walked in.
They didn't. What?
I don't know why, I do not, I don't know why.
Yeah.
But he has, Mr. Hudgens has made a request, filled out the paperwork and paid the fee. So I think we can just say to him, "You gotta go build the fence."
No, I'm okay, I'm just, it seems a lot of things were done differently for different people and just, and it wasn't us that came in, it was our builders.
It may not have depended, it may not have mattered who the person was, because I don't know Mr. Hudgens from Adam. And probably a really nice guy. He just wants a privacy fence that says it's tall and he was nice enough to come and ask.
And if that's the issue, there's no ordinance or nothing?
Not that I can find, Roger.
I thought it was six foot.
I have no idea.
Not that I can find, we just put a...
I always thought you had an opinion of six foot.
That's what I was understanding too.
We put up an eight-foot privacy cedar fence around the lift station at Halle Farms.
Make motion to approve item six O in its entirety.
If we don't have any evidence that we need a variance, I mean, you can't...
My only concern would be, I think he has two neighbors, nobody behind him. He may be doing it to keep the lights of the football field from coming into his house.
That's from the pool, yeah, neighbors have pools, he told me. I second it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion for the variance passes unanimously. Item P, discussion and possible action on a variance request from Double Rock Combs LLC to adjust the rear building line from fifteen feet to thirteen point eight-two feet on a lot located at nine five two Teslin Avenue.
This form, I don't know whether the form boards got put in the wrong place or if the form boards were just gonna be a little bit longer house. But the bottom line is, this house, this is almost picky. It goes thirteen inches into the building, it crosses over the building line by thirteen inches. So it's an interior lot in the subdivision, it backs up to County Road nine oh seven. Granted, that this easement will not have a negative effect on any neighboring lot in our opinion. We recommend approval of this variance request. Make a motion to approve item six B in its entirety.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I have a question.
No second, motion fails for lack of a second. Going back into discussion.
So, okay, so the back of his house, instead of being fifteen foot from the backyard, now he has thirteen point eighty?
That's correct, instead of having a fifteen-foot backyard...
He's got thirteen.
He's got thirteen eleven.
So is this house already built?
No, not to my knowledge. I had a form board survey presented to me for the variance request.
So they could just move the form boards up and...
And then they'd probably encroach on the front building line.
So they've built too big of a house?
This is, we get these, this type of variance request is not unusual. We get these all the time. Had many of them in Wildcat, many of them, several in Godly Ranch. In the past, again, but they're a different council and a different administration, this would typically be an administrative type thing, that wouldn't go anywhere. But since we don't have those people in place, this is, you know, this is one of those things, it would just be a call.
In other words, wouldn't come to the council?
Wouldn't bother the council with it, yes, sir, that's correct.
But if it's a variance, isn't all variances supposed to go before the council?
No, in fact, all plots don't have to come in front of the council. There are some that can be done at an administrative level.
Hmm, it's new to me.
Then again, if you had a proper-sized lot, this wouldn't be a problem.
Well, a proper-sized house when you knew what the building lines were.
I make a motion to reject the variance request from Double Rock Combs to adjust the rear building line from fifteen feet to thirteen point eight-two feet at nine five two Teslin Avenue.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
You rejecting it, why?
Well, because they can still move the form boards, just because they want to build a bigger house on a lot that's already small. I don't think, if we do this, then we're gonna have to start doing it to a lot of houses that want to build bigger houses or build pools.
Clearly, Wildcat Ridge already has several, I understand, so...
Well, that's passed.
If his lot would've been seventy-five hundred square feet, this wouldn't have happened.
I second it.
I got a, I motioned it, Roger seconded it, we're just discussing.
Oh, I didn't hear Roger say it.
Yep.
No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Discussion and possible action on approving quotes to repair a blower at the wastewater treatment plant.
Can we do that already?
We talked very short about it, but I'll be short and sweet and to the point. Got a quote from the blower people, two thousand sixty dollars, which ain't bad.
I make a motion to accept the quote...
That from both, I'm sorry?
No, that's not from both. Also, we had to get one from the electrician as well. Electrician's more, I mean, it's six thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. But for nine thousand thirty-three dollars, we could have another blower online and knock out this ammonia. I've done a lot of studies on it today and everything leads to needing more air. So, I mean, honestly, this should be a no-brainer. We've got it, we've got it hooked up, all we gotta do is hook electricity up and we're good to go. It could be done within the next two weeks.
Glenn, you said...
The process again, what were they?
The total is nine thousand and thirty-three dollars. The electrical is six thousand nine hundred and seventy-three. And the Atlas Copsco, which is the generator people, or not the generator, the blower people, is two thousand and sixty dollars.
Why is electrical so high?
Because they've gotta put everything in there. It wasn't hooked up for electricity or nothing. It was plumbed in to go for our air system, but nobody did anything with electricity, so it's gotta be wired in, it's gotta have a starter on it, it's gotta have switches for on and off and everything, so...
Glenn, you said there is an electrician on site for our...
This is, this is...
Yes, sir.
Oh, this is them?
So the total price is nine thousand thirty-three?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is a pump that we don't know if it works or not?
No, this is, this is a blower that they, Atlas Copsco has already come out. Whenever they came out to give us their quote, they spun it, everything spun and everything. So it is still a good blower. It was never, for some reason, it was never hooked up. I don't know why, but, I mean, it's needed, there's no ends ups or buts about it. If not, then we're gonna get slapped with TC coupons.
So Glenn, you said this would help lower our ammonia, lower our ammonia levels so I don't have another government agency calling me? Potentially?
Yes.
I'll add that word.
I've got, I've got some stuff right here. The most widely used methods for removing ammonia from wastewater are air stripping. Biological nitrification is the process of converting ammonia in wastewater to nitrate using aerobic. And then, let's see, and this, yeah, that means air. So, I mean, I've done my well research on it and this is gonna be our best way to go right now.
No straws?
Ma'am? No straws.
Just, I don't see, I don't see how come, how that, is it power, we not have enough electricity, where's electricity to at, where's the breaker box?
This was all hooked up at one time. We had a previous operator, four or five operators ago. Got this doggy photo show and said, "Oh, I want these new blowers."
I understand.
So the old blowers were disconnected, the pads that they sat on were knocked out, the electrical controls were taken, everything was, the two old blowers were moved aside and the two new ones brought in and hooked up. We had two blowers that were hooked up, they're not, they don't even have electrical stuff upstairs. So we planned on two blowers in that house for the third one in the future. There was no water spool for the third one, so we now have two blowers sitting there. And we have two compressors sitting on either side of the two blowers that are just sitting there, yeah, we got us. There's no electrical to them, there's spots, they don't switch for your, your electrical starters and breakers and everything else. But it's just a hole in the motor controls.
Have we got multiple bids on the electrical part?
No, ma'am, it's gonna be hard to get multiple bids on this. Who we, who we got the bid from? Peyton Wallace, he's done everything that we've had with the wastewater plant, with the lift stations and all that. So it's just hard to go by and find somebody else right now. And since they, they're doing work already with the new plant, it's able to get them right in there.
Okay.
Is this an English company, just out of curiosity?
Yes, sir, they're out of Meridian.
Oh, I mean...
Oh, the Atlas Copsco?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Labor with a U. So the customer needs to make sure that he has the starters in place and stuff to operate these controls?
That's, that's what, that's what we gotta have the electrical for.
Stuff to operate these controls. It is technical, I tell you, that's straight out of the manual. Make motion to approve item six Q in its entirety.
I'll second it. Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, is this, it is quite of an amount, do we have this in the budget to do or are we just gonna pull the money from, where are we pulling the money from? Because it is a unscheduled repair.
It is an unscheduled...
And it's quite a large one, so where are we gonna pull the funds for this?
It'll come out of the wastewater. I'd have to go get the budget to see which line item it's gonna come out of.
But the money's there to do that one?
Yes, we haven't spent much money out of the wastewater budget. I would like to see an additional bid, but...
It's kinda hard to get a bunch of additional bids on whenever our current blowers right now are Atlas Copsco. And it's, you know...
Was for the electrical part?
For the electrical part, I mean, I can call one out, but we're looking at probably another two to three week wait period and so therefore, we're looking at another two to three weeks of high ammonia plus another, what, three to four weeks for the change to take place even after we hook up the blower? So we're looking at two more months by putting, holding off and waiting on another bid.
So is this for, there's two blowers in operation now?
There's two blowers in operation now?
Two blowers that are not wired.
Correct, this is only for one of them.
So while he's in there doing electrical for the one, would it be advantageous of us to do, go ahead and wire both the blowers while he's in there and have both of them running?
Well, yeah, you're gonna double the price.
New starters, new controls, new motor wire, it's pretty much what you got in bid at six thousand plus dollars, you're gonna have another six thousand.
The other one's also not plumbed...
So there's no discount on the labor part?
Ma'am?
There's no discount on the labor part that's included, and the electrical, we did both at the same time?
Well, the problem is, if we go that route, it's actually gonna be more expensive than this one, because this one's already plumbed in to where, where our airflow is from the pump house to the tank. So the other one's not plumbed like that yet, it's just sitting there. So, I mean, I can get a quote if you want me to, but like I said, I mean, we hold off then we're still gonna cause another two months of high ammonia. And, I mean, I'm willing to do whatever you want me to do, I can get quotes on getting that other one hooked up as well, so...
This system, the original design, that might start to the fact of design that create water supply.
Okay.
We have an eight-inch pipe, steel pipe, that has flanges on it and valves and pressure relief valves and cages that we don't have a spot for them right now. We would have to go in and rebuild, extend the length of the pipe, cut a hole in the inside of the building, bring pipe in...
For the fourth one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we don't run any, other than we have, no, we don't back up.
So we won't be asked to have a fourth one attached?
No, ma'am, especially with the new plant being able to come online in December, then if we, if we need more air, we could always, you know, do a fifty-fifty flow if need be.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's...
Are you just trying to look at future, if it was good to get that input in now and maybe we won't have it online, but it'll be there when we do need it online?
I mean, it's good just to have it there, just in case we need parts on it or need to replace the other one.
I got you.
So, I mean, there's no reason to get rid of it, but there's also no reason to really hook it up right now.
Like a backup?
Yes, ma'am.
I got a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion?
I just want to see the electrical when it's done. Is that a price?
Sir?
That just seems like a heck of a large, a large price.
It's, I, yeah, I'll tell you when you showed me that number tonight, I was really surprised.
I mean, was he running double lock, what does it mean?
It's big water, yes, it's, it's, I think it's probably either thirty or forty horsepower floor. It's, there's a lot to it. Is this the cheapest electrician in town? Nope. Is he as good as any electrician we can get? We probably, or, you know, we probably did our job a little bit late. We probably, or, you know, we probably did our job a little bit late, he's breaking off the box now.
I mean, included in this is a four hundred and eighty volt starter, so, I mean, it's not just wire conduit or anything like that, we're looking at three-phase, four-eighty starter with it, um, fuses, fuse disconnects, it's everything, Unistrut, everything that's needed for it to be completed is in there.
Aye, no further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item R, discussion and possible action on the approval of the amendment to the communication system agreement with Johnson County effective October first, twenty twenty-three. Make a motion to postpone this till September twelfth.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? No, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously to postpone. Item S, discussion and possible action on advertising for the hiring of an animal control officer or otherwise contracting with third-party private business or local public entity for temporary animal control services.
What have we, uh, done as far as moving forward on that, if anything?
Um, we have it budgeted for an animal control officer, if it passes.
Okay, um, have we checked into a temporary solution for the animals out at?
I haven't had any complaints from Wildcat Ridge since we had that meeting, PD says that some of those have disappeared.
So somebody's killed them or something?
Yeah.
Presumably.
Okay, when were you thinking about, we're gonna do the animal control officer, because this is gonna happen again at some point?
October first.
When?
October first.
Okay.
I don't care to hire an au- uh, animal control officer, I think we can figure out some other ways of taking care of this.
Yeah, there's a, a private company that'll do it temporarily, that may be a better solution. It just needs to have something, in my view, available in case we have another problem like this.
I don't wanna full-time officer taking care of the animals.
I think the, that what we were gonna do was, and one would be half animal control, half code enforcement, and that one person would take care of all of that.
I just don't see the need, uh, a neuro animal problem, shit, you see, we got, we got somebody to do twenty hours a week worth of animal control, I do not know.
Well, there's gonna be times code enforcement is more, um, than just animal control, but this is a way to solve both issues with one position.
So, let's check out the temporary animal control services, get pricing, and I didn't have time to do that this week. So, bring that back to the twelfth meeting.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be fine. Or October, I mean, if, if there's no more problem in Wildcat Ridge, then, you know, I asked as well, and, and I didn't hear from anyone, is there, there's no more complaints about the dogs out there? Okay.
I make a motion to postpone till the August or October third meeting. And we can revisit it before, if it becomes an issue.
Hit and miss means? Okay, dangerous or just animals out there? All right, I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item T, discussion and possible action on the employment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer. Michael Pappenfuss, the city administrator.
Do we need a city administrator? I believe Michael can do the job. I make a motion, we vote Michael into the position.
I have a motion to appoint Michael Pappenfuss, the city administrator. Do I have a second? No second, that is for lack of a second.
Make motion, we postpone this until the next meeting.
Second.
Got a motion to postpone till September twelfth and a second.
We need a plan on how we're gonna, what we're gonna do, are we going to redo everything? We're gonna have a public meeting to have people come in and voice through committee, uh, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna fill this position?
I'm gonna stick with my original argument, after some considerations. But, of course, it's up to the rest of the council.
But your original?
I've always wanted to have an interim in, uh, headhunters. I've been arguing that for, I don't know how long.
And while I feel that, Mike, you've done a great job being in here, I've, I've been right by your side during all this. My personal opinion, and mine alone, is I think you serve better here on the council with us than you do in that role at this time. Um, I do believe it's a very hot topic for the community. Um, and no, we're not here to just specifically please the people, but, I mean, I've been by your side here, I've been by your side in there. And we've, you know, I've been on the fence with this from the very beginning, on which side I felt. You're a good leader here, and serving in this role, or even the mayor role, I would feel more comfortable than being the city administrator at this time. That's just.
Agreed.
My perspective, is nothing against you, it is just optics, whatever you, however you wanna say it, just doesn't present well with the past and how we've got to this point. It just doesn't.
I like your vision.
Yeah.
For the city.
Yeah.
And I think that your vision, for all we know, we'll all get kicked out next May. And then, if your city administrator and these folks decide they don't want you, then you're gone. Whereas, if you stay where you are, the voters have to kick you out.
Yeah.
And I find that to be less likely of a possibility.
My opinion is, we need a city administrator, we've needed one for months, different things have happened. The last three years, anything that came up, Michael has gone through and studied the, uh, laws, came up to it. He's, on his arguments, uh, with my, to me and to other people, and to other members of the council, not his arguments, but, uh, what he posted, he found out stuff, he's studied it, he's done the job here lately, do we, he's done the job. If he's not any good at it, if he comes by, you know, then we get rid of him. If he asks one of us to vote a certain way, or tell us to get off of vacation to come back there and vote this way, we get rid of him at that, we get rid of him right then and there. Uh, optics, hey, this is a whole lot better than ha- having someone become city manager, manager with, administrator without even it being on the agenda. So, people, I'll just soon do it and be done with it, and keep and get, and start moving on. With, every time we turn around, there's something, we just keep going two steps forward and three steps back, or two steps forward and one step back. Let's get a city administrator, get the city moving, get people in the seats, if they don't work out, get rid of them. And be done with it, move on, make some progress.
I understand what you're saying, but you also have to take into account, because we've been on the front line, and we know what all of these city administrators are wanting, and they want severance packages. It's not as easy as you don't do the job, you're out no more.
He doesn't want a separate package.
I only want six months.
Okay.
About your bid, paperwork that you didn't want, you weren't part of it.
I'm not willing to negotiate a severance package with, on a willy-nilly decision, and I just hope that somebody works out. It's not, that's not how I do business.
Well.
Well, if you're gonna do a severance package, most likely twelve plus months with anybody.
Yeah, I know, and now you know, I'm aware of that.
There were, there was a proposal from you for a certain amount of salary and no contract. What happened to that?
The contract that I presented was six months.
I don't have a contract. What I heard was, there was an amount that you were willing to accept, and no contract.
No, I'm not asking for a term contract, it's eighty-five, it's six months severance.
Where is that? Did you put that in here?
No, I included it last time.
Last time?
I presented it whenever I presented my resume.
Did you get that? Okay, was it stapled to the resume or something?
It was loose leaf with the rest of it.
Oh, okay.
It exactly mimics the gentleman from Utah's, so that way we didn't have to pay an attorney to look at it again, except for twelve months was changed to six months, minus all the additions.
I mean, it is a contract.
Well, yeah, it's an employment contract, it's not a contract for terms. You're, you have to sign an employment contract, but we will sign an employment contract with the city secretary. It's just how you do it. Last city administrator was supposed to have a contract, didn't.
I'll prob- I'll find it, Misty, don't worry, I must have it in my stack of stuff. I have no doubt in my mind that you can do the job, cause you've done it. Ability does not presuppose that, uh, that you should. I have concerns, not about your ability.
What are your concerns?
I'm not gonna air those here, if you wanna have some lunch, I think that'd be more appropriate. But I, I'm not gonna air them in the public meeting.
We go to, I mean, four or five months ago, yeah, we should, well, we should've went, maybe we should've went to a, uh, headhunter, but that headhunter's gonna cost us X number of dollars. Going through with that particular route, we're gonna double what we're gonna end up paying, what we have in, what we have in budget now.
Yep, we are, known that since the beginning.
Dean, didn't you say for headhunting, we're looking to spend around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars between salary and fees and?
Uh, for the, like, SGR or some service like that?
For a headhunter to go out, yeah.
I, I don't know about two hundred and fifty thousand for the service alone, but.
No, I'm saying between salary of, and, cause you go out and try to find one that's, that's qualified through headhunter, what, what are we looking at salary on?
I mean, for a city this size, I'm not quite sure, but what I've seen typical out there is, you know, two hundred, two fifty thou- two hundred and fifty thousand.
That's what, yeah, that's what.
I mean, so you could be, you know, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand is maybe for a city this size?
And there is the off chance that while we had the interim, somebody actually could apply that was doable.
Well, I think we possibly, um, I'll just say we have some resumes in hand now.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
I did not get a chance to see those.
Yeah, I've just vaguely glanced, so I think we possibly could have candidates.
We've had a bunch of resumes, sales clerks and assistants to assistants of the, of the assistant, and.
Yeah, that's been the problem the whole time.
We haven't got any qualified deals, and we didn't wanna spend two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We don't have it.
No, I agree with that, but in my opinion, and this is me alone, I still feel like Mike serves better on this council than he does in that role. And I'm not saying anything about the job you've done, because you've done an excellent job the last few months.
No one can say anything about that, other than be positive.
You ask him a question, he says, gives you an answer, his answer has not been, I don't know, which we used to get. So, let's get moving, let's get the city back in line, let's hire people.
Tell you a story about Panama Canal, one day.
Any further discussion?
Roger, I'm gonna vote, uh, what I, the way I, you know, I'm gonna work the matter, that's secret. It's not to get the city moving, it's gonna be because I think this is the best way. And I'm sorry if that locks things up, but, that's how it's going.
Uh, so, what do we do?
Aye, no further discussion, got a motion and a second to postpone till September twelfth. Scott?
Aye.
Postpone it?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I will abstain, motion passes. Item U, discussion and possible action on adopting an ordinance for floodplain management measures that meet or exceed the minimum NFIP requirements.
Is there any way, I mean, there's no reason that we, we have to do this, correct? There is just no other option else, we lose our FEMA benefits, is that correct?
Yes.
Make a motion to, uh, approve item six U in its entirety.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item V, discussion and possible action on moving the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting. This is due to multiple council members planning to attend the public hearing put on by the TCQ on September nineteenth at nineteen hundred in Cleveland for that permit number. And I'm looking to reschedule the meeting.
Make a motion to, what are we gonna do, uh, we can do this next week, I mean, unless, we're gonna have no problem with the rescheduling of the meeting. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve item six V in its entirety, and we can talk about when we wanna do it.
Well, I need to know whenever you wanna move it to.
Uh, let's see, we need to make this quick, it's eleven fifty-seven.
I am not available the twentieth, or the eighth, I'm not available the, uh.
All right, I make a motion to postpone item six V until the September twelfth meeting. I'll amend my original motion.
Move it to when?
The twelfth, next week.
I have a motion to postpone till the September twelfth meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item W, discussion and possible action on the approval of the transfer of the Hadley Farms Park amenities and associated assets to the city of Godley. Item W, discussion and possible action on the approval of the transfer of the Hadley Farms Park amenities and associated assets to the city of Godley.
Make a motion to postpone item six W until the nine twelve meeting.
I have a motion to postpone till the September twelfth meeting.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Scott?
Aye. Thank y'all.
Roger.
Aye.
Aye, motion to adjourn. Twenty-three fifty-nine.
I'm not available the eighteenth of September. Well, mine won't be here.